That just set off alarm bells and really some panic in Democratic circles. And since then, what we've seen is this flotilla of Democratic heavy hitters heading into the state. Former President Barack Obama is going to be coming in, so will Stacey Abrams, who of course ran for governor in Georgia. Jill Biden is going to be coming in for McAuliffe. Speaker Nancy Pelosi hosted a fundraiser for him. So those are all signs of real alarm among Democrats about where this race is going.
Alarm that McAuliffe could lose to Yonkin. And what would it mean for Republicans if this race remains very close? And if Yonkin were to defeat McAuliffe, which would be a meaningful upset?
It would be a very, very meaningful upset. It would be the first time Republicans win in Virginia in a dozen years. It would be a major feather in their cap. It would probably lead to a huge influx of money because you'd see this surge of enthusiasm among Republican donors who would see that control of Congress could be in their grasp in next year's midterms. And it would also, I think, cause a lot of these candidates who are running in the midterms to try to steal the Yonkin playbook, to run on schools. I suspect we'll already be hearing about schools in the midterms. If Yonkin wins, I think it'll be an inescapable part of every Republicans' message. For American parents, this is their third year of schooling during a pandemic. It is something that is ingrained at this point in every American household with kids. And you have this situation where you have Republicans. They've seized on this issue that is really resonant and visceral in a lot of American households, and they're defining the terms of it. A few months ago, it was about keeping schools open. Then they've talked more or less about critical race theory. Now the focus is really on masks and vaccine mandates in schools. But if this issue that Republicans are defining helps them win Virginia, change the national political environment, and gives them the edge heading into the midterms next year, it could just be the thing that potentially helps Republicans win back control of Congress.
Lisa, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Lisa Lehr is a National Political Correspondent for The New York Times.
The Daily is supported by Planet, providing companies and governments a daily view of Earth from space, empowering them to make timely decisions and solve problems in a rapidly changing world. See change? Change the world. Learn how at planet.com. Listeners of The Daily get to the heart of the stories shaping the world, hosted by Michael Barbaro and produced by The New York Times. For more on today's episode, go to nytimes.com/thedaily.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily at nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Michael Barbaro. See you tomorrow.
Support for Radio IQ comes from VMDO Architects, connecting people and places through design since 1976. More on VMDO's designs for educational communities and municipalities can be found at vmdo.com. And Texture Living, offering custom furniture featuring over 100 fabric and finish options, made of sustainable materials and manufactured in Roanoke, Virginia. More at txtur.com.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRIQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FMY.
The Roanoke City Regular Session, October 18, 2027 PM session, is hereby called to order. And I will ask our clerk, the lovely Susie McCoy, to please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
And Mayor Lee is late.
Yes, and a quorum is present. Councilmember Best Pitch has requested that he participate via Zoom, and that has been voted on, and he is allowed to participate this evening via Zoom. Our invocation today will be led by our very own Councilmember Cobb, and I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
May our ears be tuned for deep listening. May our minds be engaged in thoughtful inquiry. May our lips be inclined toward curious wisdom. And may our hearts be full of gratitude for this place we call home. And in all that we discern together tonight, may love do its transformative work. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome this evening, everyone, to the very, very crowded council chambers. I appreciate you all wearing a mask, and we are social distancing as best we possibly can. I know we have some folks standing, but I don't... Did you see any... Nowhere? No. Okay. Well, we apologize for standing room only, but welcome anyway. And at this time, I would call on Councilmember Moon Reynolds to bring us out of our closed meeting.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Freedom, Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Tonight's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7 o'clock PM and Saturdays from 10 AM to 5 PM, and also video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. And the first item on our agenda tonight is A, Other Business. And I'm going to call on Councilmember Cobb to bring his presentation on the Gun Violence Commission.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Whiteboy, and thank you, council members. I'm honored to be here tonight to give you a brief update on the work of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. And we're going to be focusing particularly tonight on the mini-grants that were awarded this summer. So tonight, in about 15 minutes, I'm going to give you an overview of our progress to date, hear about our mini-grants and the impact they made in our community, particularly in the lives of our youth and their families. I'm going to introduce to you a couple of folks who were part of these initiatives so that they can tell you directly some of the impact that was made. Going to introduce you to our new Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator that we were able to hire through the $500,000 grant that we received from the state. And then I'll conclude with a couple of upcoming events that will be of interest to the public. So the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, as you may be aware, is appointed by city council. It's comprised of nine members. I serve as the chair. I'd like any of our commission members who may be here tonight to either stand or raise your hand. Nicole Ross is here, Stacey Shepherd in the back. I know several had other commitments tonight. But they've been very active and engaged, and many of them since we began this work two years ago. We have kind of a three-pronged purpose. One is to gather, review, and study the issue of gun violence within the city, to make recommendations to you as a council for particular actions that we can take to reduce the epidemic of gun violence within our community, and then to aid the city in making and developing community partnerships to assist in the reduction of gun violence. And I will just tell you upfront that the work that we've done over the last two years to engage our community partners is seen as exemplary throughout the state and other communities that are grappling to come to terms with gun violence in their own communities. So the fact that we have community partners of all types that are willing to be a part of finding solutions is kudos to us. So as I mentioned earlier, we awarded $17... We awarded $65,000 in mini-grants at the beginning of the summer to 17 local nonprofit and faith-based organizations for activities designed for prevention and intervention of gun violence in the community. These grants range from $1,500 to $4,500, and activities included education, training for conflict resolution, being trauma-informed, providing youth employment opportunities, mentoring, scholarships, and programs and events. I'm going to give you a quick overview of each of these because I think it's important for you to hear some of the impact that was made. The Boys and Girls Club of Southwest Virginia provided mentoring, conflict resolution, character building, and resiliency work through Project Learn, which reached 150 youth over the summer. Building Bridges Over Barriers and the Roanoke Sigmas created United and Rising Together, No Guns, Just Fun at Forest Park Academy, which featured several speakers who had been directly impacted and affected by gun violence, talking to the youth about what it means to have a life purpose and how, when we know who we are, the opportunities become more available and we have more encouragement. Because one of the things that we continue to hear from our youth in the community is that they feel like they lack purpose and they lack opportunity. Casa Latina of Roanoke Valley held summer hangouts at Huff Lane Park, featuring testimonials of persons impacted by gun violence, opportunities for wholeness through recreation and the arts. And every hangout was multilingual, not only in language, but multicultural in terms of food that they shared as part of a larger family meal. Community Arts Reach created Arts Up, Guns Down as part of the inaugural Juneteenth celebration at Eureka Park. And the day was a true celebration of the talents of our community youth and families. Cafe, which is Cultural Arts for Excellence, partnered with local leaders and nonprofits to direct a summer camp, serving youth and their families with a focus on mental health support, anger management skills, and development of healthy life and coping skills. These youths were also introduced, many of them for the first time in their life, to horsemanship, to be able to go out and be a part of nature and to learn how to care for a horse and ride a horse. Family Service of Roanoke Valley provided positive action programming to 102 elementary students in four youth-based programs, the Presbyterian Community Center, Boys and Girls Club, West End Center, and Community Youth Program. All of these mini-grants were collaborative in nature, involving multiple community partners. Gen Now Youth, a program of Garden of Prayer Number Seven, created two community events, the Locker Room at Lansdowne and Movie Night at the Garden, to introduce and engage youth in positive opportunities as healthy pathways away from violence. Many of you probably heard about Groceries Not Guns, a gun buyback event through partnership with the Virginia Harm Reduction Coalition and the Roanoke chapter of the NAACP. We were able to distribute over $14,000 in grocery gift cards with 91 guns turned in or exchanged, involving 32 semi-automatic handguns, 40 long guns, revolvers, rifles, and 47 people on the waiting list who want to turn in their guns. And one of the most impactful stories that we heard in response was one young man who came to the event and simply said, "I'm not in a good headspace, and I don't want this around me." The Humble Bees Youth Ministry at Paradise Cathedral facilitated training and programming for adult and peer mentoring for youth ages four to 17, again focused on healthy choices and encouraging youth who may not see college as something on their horizon to take them for a college campus visit at Hollins University. Humble Hustle partnered with Imagine Me Mentoring to provide a summer camp experience for 25 young boys, many of whom have been directly affected by gun violence. It introduced them to community leaders, skills in building resiliency and decreasing conflict, and introducing them to cultural history and heritage. Paradise Community Development Center hosted a series of lock-ins to equip youth with tools for navigating summer safely in partnership with Roanoke Police, Better Agreements, Fed Up, and Goodwill Youth HQ. And yes. The Soul Foundation hosted the Waymakers Club and a block party at Lucy Addison Middle School. To prepare kids to go back to school, they offered free haircuts and braiding in partnership with a local barber and beauty school, and talked with kids about how to focus on their mental, physical, and spiritual health. Straight Street partnered with Roanoke City Public Schools to present Rachel's Challenge, which is named after Rachel Scott, the first victim of the Columbine school shootings in 1999. And school assemblies were held at several local elementary schools in partnership with Roanoke City Public Schools. Total Action for Progress ran six weeks of summer programming for youth in the community and also hosted The Voice of Our Youth: An Honest Conversation on Violence in Our Community Through the Voices of Youth. West End Center expanded its youth summer program, engaging middle and high school youth in facing fears through cultivated teamwork, critical thinking skills, baking from scratch, and career opportunities. And We Charm partnered with Cafe in support of their summer camp experience, adding classes in public speaking and in violence reduction and gun safety efforts for families affected by gun violence. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Angela Williams, Antonio Stovall, and Matt, who are going to come and share a little bit about the impact of TAP's work this summer. And I've asked each of them to be very brief because we know that we've got a long agenda tonight. But I wanted you to hear just briefly what they heard and what some of us heard from the youth this summer.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening.
Good evening.
Come on over. We began working with the individuals. As Joe Cobb said, most of our youth were in the AACCI program that Antonio Stovall teaches at Fleming. What our concern was during the summertime was those individuals wouldn't have anything to do once school let out. So the anti-violence money allowed us to continue a summer program, which we also applied for an outdoor grant, and we were able to take our youth outside of Roanoke at least once a month to Camp Vessel to explore different things. The idea behind Antonio's class is exactly what Joe talked about, learning about who they are and where they're going. So what Antonio's class did was allow a group of young men from seven different locations, or as we would call them in here, severing different gangs, severing different areas that represent their hood. So what I'm basically saying to you is there were seven different neighborhoods of the same individuals that we see currently right now fighting and shooting at each other in one location in agreement, having a discussion about what they want and what they need. So we pulled this together at the Dumas. We kept them behind the curtain, and we allowed the audience to freely ask them questions. And they answered all of those questions. Some of the things we heard is that they cannot trust adults because they go and they knock on doors and they're turned away. So we had a symposium where we worked with some of the providers in this room, and we talked about trying to gap some of those services, and we identified what those gaps are. Another thing that they talked about was getting their younger siblings away from the neighborhoods and what they're seeing. Because what's happening is their younger siblings are glorifying ganghood. So bringing out more activities and allowing Parks and Rec to be able to allow them to come back to the parks to play. Before I continue anymore, I want you to hear about how this class went from 44 students to 72 students, and we have a waiting list. This class is a class where these individuals, when Antonio asks them, "Do you want to be in this class?", everybody raises their hand. "Are you getting something out of this class?", everybody raises their hand. That young man that showed up to turn in his gun is because in that class he realized how he's thinking and how he wants to retaliate is not something that he should do. What we learned was they have learned behaviors, things that are expected of them from their families to protect their families in their neighborhoods. And they want help just as much as we want help for them. So without me saying anything else, I'd like for Antonio to talk a little bit about his class and what they do. And that class also went from just being all males to males and females. And then I want Mr. Matt here, who is an ex-gang leader, to talk a little bit about why he left and how this class and this whole anti-violence grant has changed his life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So my name is Antonio Stovall. And so I teach African-American male studies. And one of the key concepts that we touch on is identity. What we're seeing with our youth is a lack of identity. I am a reflection of them. I came from that same environment. I came from that same poverty consciousness. And it wasn't until I started to develop knowledge of self, understanding who I was, is when I really started to change my life. And now I took that same methodology of teaching that I learned over my years and started to implement it into the students at William Fleming. And we're seeing a change within the students. And just, Matt is just one student. We have others who have made a great change in their life. And I introduced them to the importance of history, the importance of culture, the importance of mindfulness meditation, the importance of community, the importance of having a purpose, just having everyone, letting them know everyone has a gift. And some, just as some of the examples that I've, that I have to share with you all tonight is I have students who are making such an impact in their life that it's impacting their home. So now their parents are wanting to, they're seeing a change in their child. It's like, okay, what are you doing? Like, and now the parents now want to know more about meditation. The parents want to know more about nutrition, et cetera. I had another student, I'm not going to say his name, but it's clear. I mean, I come from that world, that world that they grew up in, and I can see that he's clearly in the streets. I can see, I can see that he's clearly doing things that we know he shouldn't be doing. And he seen me in the hallway the other day, and he was walking with one of his friends who had tattoos from his neck all the way down, his arms had gold teeth. And he told him, he was like, "I wish you was in this class." And that made me feel good because that lets me know that the word is spreading. This is work I've been doing for 13 years. And a lot of stuff that I've been doing in my community was seen as like taboo, meditation, eating healthy, et cetera. But now people are starting to become more aware of it because these are some of the key elements that our youth are missing. And William Fleming and TAP has now given me the opportunity to share this wisdom and this information with the youth, and it's helping them. Like I said, we have 72 students. We still have a waiting list of students who want to, who want to be a part of what we're doing because the word is starting to spread. And now the principal at William Fleming, now she wants me to hold meditation sessions for, for the whole school. And now it's starting to spread to Addison, it's starting to spread to Wild Joe Wilson. And I just, I'm just thankful that I had the opportunity to share this, this knowledge and this wisdom with our youth because they need it. This is, this is what they've been, this is what they've been wanting and needing.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall.
How you doing, everyone?
Hello.
Today, my name is Matt. I'm a gang leader. It just ain't something that everybody don't want to be in. Ain't something that everybody's really meant for. Ain't something that everybody is cared for or anybody cared for you. But Mr. Stovall's class is a really, class that you really want to get into if you're in a gang with it or not gang with it. It don't even have to matter with gang related stuff. His meditation really does stuff to people. It concentrates your mind, everything that you really need if you didn't have it, pretty much that. A lot of people like his class. I'm one of his favorite students. I bring people to his, to his class, and I motivate people to come. A lot of people started to come and pop up like my age and more. They really started to see what the class is more about, that it's not cabin about their history and stuff like that, all that good stuff. And yeah, that's pretty much it. I don't got really a lot to say, but yeah.
So let me just say, we truly understand it's more than just meditation. But what we're trying to get across is when you allow the youth to lead what they need, it will be successful. That's where this started, from this mini-grant. We are thankful because the youth spoke, and they spoke clearly of what they need. And I just hope that we continue to listen to our youth and bring more youth advocacy councils together. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Xavier Duckett with Humble Hustle to come up and speak briefly, and Chris Roberts, Chris, if you would also come up.
He was in the back. Yeah, I did see him in the back.
Okay. So we're one of seven localities in Virginia to receive funding for a community youth assessment. We'll be conducting that over the next few months. We also received, as I mentioned before, the Gun Violence Intervention Program grant. And we were able to hire Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator, and we're in the process of completing the hiring of two street outreach employees. So it's my honor to introduce to you now our brand-new, just two weeks on the job, Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator, Chris Roberts. I'm going to have him tell a little bit about himself and a little bit about his vision. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Take this down. Good afternoon, good evening, council members. Again, I'm Chris Roberts. I started my career with juvenile probation and parole as a juvenile probation officer here in Roanoke City, progressed to a senior parole officer in Roanoke City, and then became the probation supervisor over Roanoke City of all the probation officers over the, during the course of 14 years. I've grew up in this city. I was raised in this city. I went to high school here, went to William Fleming for two years. Then I went to Roanoke Catholic and graduated from there my final two years of high school. That's my path here. I've worked before juvenile probation and parole at our local detention center for seven years, and then moved to the community side, supervised the community service for the court-ordered kids who've been ordered to community service in the community. So over the last 20 years, I've served Roanoke City's youth via in the community or secure facility here in the city and served them pretty well and developed a reputation and a good collaboration with community agencies, to schools, Blue Ridge, private vendors as well. So I have a lot of experience, a lot of community contacts, and looking to gain more. Very impressed with this young man, Mr. Stovall's class. And I'll be contacting him as well to get some guidance from them because those guys are the experts right now. I'm coming in new, looking to learn what I can learn from the youth and connect them to the right services to help prevent some of the things that are going on now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So I'll just close by tell you a couple, telling you a couple of things that are coming up. We meet monthly as a commission on the second Tuesday of every month. But our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 9, and it will be at the Burgland Performing Arts Theater. We'll be hosting a community forum in which we will be giving an update on our city's comprehensive framework for gun violence prevention. We'll hear from our mayor, the chief of police, myself and the commission, our reset coordinator Lloyd Merchant, and our city manager. And during that community forum, we'll be asking the public to share your ideas about how we can best use the American Rescue Plan funds that have been designated by the Citizens Panel toward violence interruption and prevention in the city. And that will be at 6 o'clock on November 9. Before I share this last thing, I'd like to ask anyone who's here representing one of the mini-grant groups from this summer, if you would please stand so that we can acknowledge you and thank you. acknowledge you and thank you. Casa Latina, Groceries Not Guns, Imagine Me, Humble Hustle, We Charm, and Paradise Cathedral, and TAP, right? Thank you all very much. And then finally, we have been asked by the State Department of Criminal Justice Services to provide a webinar for the rest of the state and localities to talk about the work we've been doing in Roanoke. Um, they're very pleased with what we're doing and see it as a model for other communities in the Commonwealth, and we'll be presenting that on Wednesday, November 10th at 1:00 PM. So, Mr. Mayor, that's our update for you from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, and we're grateful for the time tonight.
Well, let me thank you all. Thank you, uh, Councilman Cobb, and everybody that's contributed and doing the work with regards to gun violence. It's a tough issue, but I, I, I say that we're working on it, but it's not a Roanoke issue. As I see the new, this is a societal problem we have with gun violence in our community. But we're going to keep working and, uh, to make sure that you're safe, because our first responsibility is to make sure you feel safe in your areas and homes. And so, uh, I, I thank Mr. Cobb and this, and this council, and the city manager, and our police chief for the work that's going in, and we'll continue to work. Is that, uh, is the gang violence person that we brought on?
Yeah, I think he came in as he was speaking. Chris, could you stand up again?
Yeah, he was just.
Okay, I got to bring you in one day, and we can talk about what we're getting, what we're doing here in the city. But thank you. We look forward to working with you. Thank you, thank you.
And where we are, right here, public hearing.
Okay.
These are probably five, uh, these seven.
Okay.
And, uh, these are, I don't see, uh, down here.
Okay. So, oh, this is the right one.
Yeah.
Okay. Have we, where are we, where are we doing, please? Okay. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. We're now led to see a public hearing. I do want to recognize, and I may miss him, but I see my former colleague here, Mr. John Gallants here, who, who used to sit either one of the sides, John, but it's good to see you again. All right. Uh, public hearing, uh, and we have a request from, of Bill Chapman to vacate a 12-foot wide alley surrounded by 208 Fourth Street Southwest, 210 Fourth Street Southwest, 355 Campbell Avenue Southwest, and 351 Campbell Avenue Southwest. I meant to say, I said 355 Campbell Avenue and 351 Campbell Avenue, both in Southwest, and extending approximately 68 feet south from an alley that runs perpendicular to Fourth Street Southwest. Bill Chapman is the petitioner and the spokesperson. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance permanently vacating discontinuing and closing approximately 12-foot wide alleys surrounded by 208 Fourth Street Southwest, 210 Fourth Street, 355 Campbell Avenue Southwest, and 351 Campbell Avenue Southwest that extends approximately 68 feet south from an alley that runs perpendicular to Fourth Street Southwest, as more particularly described here and after, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Uh, it must be noted that the city planning commission approved this on a 7-0 vote. And with that being said, I'm going to recognize Mr. Chapman, is he here? Mr. Chapman?
I don't think Mr. Chapman is here this evening, but I can answer any questions for you as planning commission agent.
All right, well, I'll ask the council if they have any comments once I, uh, open the public hearing. All right, and are there citizens wishing to be heard on this?
No.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing and ask council if they have any questions or comments. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number two in the public hearing is a request of St. Elizabeth's Episcopal Church to close by barricade a portion of York Road Southwest at the intersection of 2352 York Road Southwest and Old York Road Southwest, extending perpendicular, perpendicular across York Road Southwest to the boundary of 2302 Northview Drive Southwest, and preventing vehicle, vehicle traffic on the southern portion of York Road Southwest that deadens at 2339 Grandin Road Southwest. Greg Watts, representing St. Elizabeth's Episcopal Church, is the spokesperson. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the alteration and closing by barricade of certain public right-of-way in the city of Roanoke at the intersection of 2352 York Road Southwest, Zero York Road Southwest, to the boundary of 2302 Northview Drive Southwest, as more particularly described here and after, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. The city planning commission approved this request on a 7-0 vote. And at this time, Mr. Watts, is he here? Welcome to city council, Mr. Watts.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, you are free to have any comments, or if you want to wait to determine, just for me to see if council has any comments or questions, you can do that.
I'd be pleased to answer any questions that the council has.
Okay, we'll do that then. I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any speakers signed up?
No, sir.
All right, no speakers. What's that? Okay. Okay. All right, being no speakers, there are no speakers that have signed up, we'll close the public hearing and ask my colleagues on council if they have any comments or questions regarding this matter. All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes, Mr. Watts.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number three is the, uh, request of Greater Roanoke Transit Company to vacate a 10-foot wide alley between and parallel to 11th Street Southeast and 12th Street Southeast, extending perpendicular from the, uh, southern edge of Campbell Avenue Southeast approximately 175 feet to the northern edge of Kirk Avenue Southeast. Kevin Price is the general manager and spokesperson. Well, the planning commission continued this matter until Monday, November the 8th here in council chambers. So that's been continued, if there's anybody here to speak on this matter. It continued on November the 8th. Item number four is a request of the city of Roanoke to amend Chapter 36.2 zoning code of the city of Roanoke as amended for clarification and consistency with state law. Wayne Leffrich, agent spokesperson, but the planning commission continued this matter until Monday, November 8th, November the 8th also at 1:30 PM. The same as, uh, the last, the last item is at 1:30 PM here in the council chamber. So if there's anybody here to speak on that, that will be, has been continued until November 8th. All right, item number five is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to grant a non-exclusive variable with access easement containing approximately 29,662 square feet, more or less across city-owned property located in the county of Roanoke, Virginia, to Jack and Ann Wimmer to provide ingress and egress to property owned by Jack and Ann Wimmer. Robert S. Carroll Jr., our city manager, is the spokesperson. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of a non-exclusive variable with access easement containing approximately 29,662 square feet, more or less, across city of Roanoke-owned property located in the county of Roanoke, Virginia, bearing Roanoke County parcel identification number 009.00-01-21.00-0000 to Jack Wimmer and Ann Wimmer upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, I am pleased to, to recognize the city manager for any comments that he may have on this.
Nothing added this time, other than what is already in the staff report. Happy to answer any questions, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to open the public hearing. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
No citizens.
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing and, uh, ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments regarding this issue.
I do have a question.
Uh, Mr. Jeffrey?
About, is this, is this in our jurisdiction?
Uh, it's Roanoke County. I just want to make sure.
We own the property, so in this instance, we're acting as the property owner.
Okay.
And that's really, because there's no zoning issues or anything here, it's really just about a transfer of a piece of our ownership, um, in this case.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, thank you. Uh, okay, seeing that there are no other questions, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number six is a proposal, proposal of the city of Roanoke to grant an underground utility easement with an approximately width of 15 feet across city-owned property located in Roanoke County, Virginia, to Appalachian Power Company to provide electric service to an adjacent parcel of property owned by Jack and Ann Wimmer. Robert S. Carroll Jr., our city manager, is the spokesperson. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of a 15-foot-wide underground utility easement under and across city of Roanoke-owned property located in the county of Roanoke, Virginia, bearing county of Roanoke parcel identification number 018.00-01-09.01-0000, and county of Roanoke parcel identification number 009.00-01-21.00-0000 to Appalachian Power Company upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, thank you. Uh, I'll recognize the city manager for any comments that he may have.
Uh, nothing added at this point, so, thank you.
All right. We're now open the public hearing. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
No citizens wishing to be heard.
All right, we'll close the public hearing and, uh, ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments on this item. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number seven is a request of Brandon Village LLC to rezone property located at Old Brandon Avenue Southwest from R7 Residential Single Family District to MXPUD, which is Mixed Use Plan Unit Development District, subject to the development plan that specifies location of buildings and infrastructure, site access, and building design. Ben Crew, Crew, a Blazer, and Associates Incorporated, and Robert Fraylon, Brandon LLC, is the spokesperson. There is, uh, an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance rezoning certain property located at Zero Brandon Avenue Southwest, bearing tax, tax number 1250801 from R7 Residential Single Family District to MXPUD, Mixed Use Plan Unit Development District, subject to the development plan that specifies location of buildings and infrastructure, site access, and building design, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, the city planning commission approved on a 4-1 vote this item. And, uh, Mr. Crew, or Mr. Fraylon, I will gladly recognize you for any comments, or you can wait until we have questions. Yes, Fraylon?
Mayor Lee, honorable members of council, thank you for your time. And, um, I went in tonight thinking that we may be the most important thing on the agenda, and I've firmly been corrected, and we are definitely not. So congratulations on all your work on gun violence, and I'm so proud to be part of what I didn't know about before tonight. So thank you so much. We have a lot in common in this room, behind me, in front of me, everywhere, we all care about Roanoke. For anybody to take the time to come speak, they obviously care about their city. So thanks to everyone here, yourself, all the citizens, and I hope we can have, as we started, an informative, kind discussion and come with a, a, a good conclusion, whatever's best for Roanoke. I want to start and also thank Catherine Gray and Wayne Leffrich with staff. They worked very hard, Catherine twice, uh, on this proposal, and, um, planning commission worked very hard. I just want to make sure everybody's think properly, because it's been a lot of work getting to this point. Um, also, I want to make sure we're clear, there are a lot of people behind me whom I respect tremendously. I, I respect who they are, as people, professionals, parents, um, and that's what civic discourse is all about, and so, um, I appreciate them. So, you know, why are we back? Um, and, and this is a big decision, and I've truly felt like council, uh, deserve a second, second look at this. With, with, things have changed, and we're going to go into that with the presentation. Very kindly and respectfully. Very kindly and respectfully, what has changed the most is our firm now owns the property. And so, the citizens have rightfully elected you on council, and it's largely going to be up to you to decide how the property's developed. And, you know, it's going to either be the by-right use, or what we believe is a far better use for the property. We feel like we've mitigated traffic, we've mitigated stormwater, and the presentation's going to share such. Quickly, and I'm going to step away, and then at the very end, I'm going to tie it quickly together, but it's really going to be about your questions, and we want to make sure you have plenty of time to answer the questions that are going to be generated from the audience and from us. So, quickly, Brian McKayhill, if you don't mind standing, Brian. Brian is our chief operating officer. He's been totally wonderful for our firm, is just a great guy with tons of integrity, and he's going to make a presentation. And then Wyn Phillips, she is our operations manager for the homebuilding business and the property management business, and she is wonderful, and she's going to briefly speak to you. And then you've heard from Ben Crew, from Balzer and Associates. He is unparalleled in his knowledge of stormwater and traffic, and so, I encourage you to ask him questions. And that's it. And so, now, Mr. McKayhill, Brian is going to get up and talk a little bit about the project, and so is Wyn Phillips. And again, we encourage questions, we think that's how you get to good solutions. So, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and council.
Good evening.
Good, so, I'll be brief, but I did want to hit a few highlights of this proposal. So, as you all know, we're here to vote on a rezoning proposal, which we're calling option A, okay? And that option does require your approval. It has two defined, controlled, engineered entrances integrated with Brandon Avenue. It includes fifty-four apartment homes and fifteen townhomes for future development. But you're also voting on another option here, right? There's the by-right option. So, this is our default option if the proposal is not accepted. And what that would include is twelve single-family rental homes on Brandon Avenue with the back parcel left for future rezoning and/or additional homes. We've left the thirteenth lot here vacant to provide access into that parcel. And again, this doesn't require rezoning approval, would obviously require engineering approval from the city, but by right, it's what we're left to do with this land. So, some key considerations as you consider our rezoning request. First, this property is in a unique spot. It's located, really, at the intersection of three distinct neighborhoods. And if you read the plan about all of those neighborhoods or each of them, it's very clear that they're calling for higher-density village centers, which is what we believe our proposal supports. This location is directly adjacent to a commercial center. It's also across from multifamily properties. Right across the street, you'll find multifamily units. The property can be developed, as I mentioned earlier, in option B, yielding over thirty rental homes by right. And we're proposing not the maximum density here. If we were to come in for multifamily rezoning based on the acreage of this parcel, we could be asking for a hundred and five units. We're asking for sixty-nine. The other thing I want to highlight again is our proposal has two defined, engineered, controlled entrances integrated with Brandon Avenue. That's in contrast to the by-right option, which is twelve driveways right on Brandon Avenue. That's a very important thing that I ask you to consider. And we believe our proposal with the two controlled entrances is a much better fit for traffic and for the community for many reasons. And lastly, you're going to hear a lot of people speak, as Mr. Frayland mentioned. I do ask that we don't let the vocal minority overtake the silent majority. There's ninety-nine thousand folks that live in Roanoke City, and about double that in the surrounding community. And I do ask that you consider the region at large. Mr. Crew's going to talk more about traffic, but I want to hit a few highlights here as well, because it is something that you're going to hear a lot about tonight. First point is that we believe pedestrian traffic matters. It's important. And our proposal will markedly improve that with a continuous sidewalk up Brandon Avenue, enabling safe traffic between Patrick Henry, Grandin Village Center, Towers Mall, and other local businesses. You may hear comments or questions about VDOT standards in a rezoning proposal, and I want to remind everybody that VDOT standards are based on suburban environments. We are not in a suburban environment in Roanoke City, we're in an urban environment, and not everything that VDOT calls for is practical or even feasible in that type of environment. This proposal also has a very negligible impact on the existing traffic flow. There's over twenty thousand vehicles that go up and down Brandon Avenue, it's a major urban corridor. We're only adding less than two percent to that. Again, two defined, controlled, engineered, integrated entrances on Brandon Avenue versus twelve driveways that are by right. And lastly, I want to point out the striping work that the city has done recently on Brandon Avenue. I think it's made a big difference. I drive up and down that corridor myself, and it's created a nice bike lane that's going to create, and with only a single lane of traffic between that and the bike lane, it's going to create an easy, or exit and entrance into the community that we're proposing. That was not there a few years ago. So, without, I'm going to turn it over to Wyn for a bit here.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for your time. Before I proceed, I do want to share with you that I was raised as a resident of Roanoke City, and I grew up on Brandon Avenue. So, this project is a little bit close to home as well, as we continue. In my role as operations manager at R. Frayland, I experience the need for affordable housing every single day. That's what I do. People are hungry for affordable living, and there's undoubtedly a lack of equality in housing throughout our area. So, that's what we hope to achieve here today as well. Before we leave traffic, everybody's favorite thing, certainly want to highlight, again, pedestrian traffic matters. This is going to be huge impact to improve pedestrian traffic, safe pedestrian traffic between Patrick Henry and Grandin Village, two defined and controlled entrances versus the twelve driveways. And I, too, experience the improvements in striping on Brandon Avenue as I drive it every single day. So, I'm here to speak on what you'll see inside and outside of this proposed plan. On our exterior finishes, you will see a mix of masonry, bringing it together the historic feel as well as the modern touch with brick and stone. We'll have very clean lines with our lap siding, and then our textured look with the shake siding. It'll certainly elevate this section of Brandon Avenue. And the beautiful Craftsman trim just gives those defined shapes and lines as that curator to the exteriors of our buildings. Moving inside the properties, we will have granite countertops, luxury plank flooring. I'd say it's the new gray. Everybody is hungry for this durable and beautiful flooring option. Tall ceilings will open up the interior of the spaces, and we'll define it with custom Inside the townhomes, we're going to mirror the same. So, they won't be identical, but we'll certainly maintain the beauty of the masonry, the Craftsman trim, the shake, and those upgraded interior features as well. Community benefits. So, these new sidewalks, the link of the property, will enable safer pedestrian traffic between the Patrick Henry, Grandin Village Center, Towers Mall, and other local businesses. It will preserve the natural features of the Murray Run and surrounding vegetation, keeping that green space. There will be an easement donated for the future greenway along Murray Run. It'll provide much-needed, affordable, quality housing, less than a mile and a half from the growing epicenter of Carleian and Virginia Tech. This will meet the surging demand for housing for the growing number of residents who aspire to live in the southwestern area of the city. It will result in an economic boost of ten million dollars in construction activity. There will be consistent property tax revenue totaling one-point-four million over twenty-year period with limited expense. This will naturally provide new customers to the adjacent village center, and this will, most importantly, allow more young professionals to live closer to the city's inner core and tertiary neighborhood centers that will enjoy more business revenue. Mr. McKayhill, you want to wrap us up?
So, a question I hear asked a lot from the community is what has changed. We were here four years ago, and a lot's changed, and I want to highlight a few of those key items. So, first of all, we did not own the property when we were last here. We do own it now. And so, when you own a property and you're in the business we're in, it needs to be developed. And we're either going to do it through the rezoning proposal with your blessing, obviously, option A, or we'll do it by right, which would be the twelve homes. They're both economically viable, but we believe the proposed rezoning is the best option for Roanoke City, providing the most benefits and the most consistent option with the city plan 2040. I also want to point out, in your agenda packet, on page sixteen, you know, back to traffic, I just want to read a few excerpts from the summary that was provided to you. So, it's the top of page sixteen. "When comparing the additional traffic generated by the development, additional afternoon peak hour trips compared to the by-right development would not be expected to affect existing traffic operations significantly. Comparatively, the proposed development also includes fewer entrances, exits onto Brandon than single-family housing, and the development's addition of a protected westbound left-turn lane would help mitigate impacts on traffic operations along Brandon Avenue." And then it goes on to summarize that we're providing general conformity with the requests made by the transportation division over the course of reviews. So, I just want to point that out from staff. Another thing that's changed is, you know, our opinion, city council is focused more on economic development and diversity of housing and lack of affordable housing in the city. And city plan 2040 best captures that new focus. It's a recently approved plan, and that plan calls for complete neighborhood village centers with diverse higher-density housing, and we believe our proposal answers that call. And lastly, our last rezoning proposal was unanimously supported by planning commission and staff, and we believe our proposal is stronger today than it was. Back to city plan 2040, it's calling for this type of development, and we've also added a buffer of townhomes between multifamily and the single-family neighborhood behind it. That's an addition that we think makes the proposal stronger. So, thank you for hearing out the presentation. I am going to turn it over to Mr. Crew to speak in more details on traffic and stormwater.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of council. I'm Ben Crew with, oh goodness, Ben Crew with Balzer and Associates, a local architects and engineering firm. And I'm going to cover three items with you this evening to reinforce part of this project that we feel is very, very important. In addition to what's been mentioned by the team, I'm going to highlight three items. First is land use, second is stormwater, and the third is traffic, okay? So, you know, these three items are outlined and highlighted throughout many discussions with staff, discussions with commissioners, whether it's transportation or stormwater or planning staff, whether it was comments provided from the three neighborhood groups, emails or communication with the city, you know, there were different themes, and these three were important themes that we wanted to make sure we addressed. So, the first, we're going to talk about land use. So, you know, city staff has worked tirelessly to provide a great agenda report for us this evening. You know, it is lengthy, there's a lot of information contained within it, and also with a positive recommendation from the planning commission. The recommendation highlights from planning commission the need for this project. It also indicates how the project reinforces the, you know, the guiding principles of the comprehensive plan. In regards to land use, you know, we feel that this project, you know, tests the validity in the background or backbone of the new plan 2040. You know, there was a lot of work put into that. You know, the new 2040 plan, it's vibrant, there's all kinds of great information on the website, a lot of supporting documents. Staff provides videos that outline, you know, clearly the objectives of the new comp plan. We feel it's important to note that, you know, five pages of the staff report are devoted solely to how the project meets the general criteria of this proposal before you this evening. You know, there's a couple of notes in there that, excerpts that I'm going to take out that say, "Staff finds no conflict among the proposed land uses and existing land uses. The mix of such uses exists harmoniously in neighborhoods throughout the city, and this location's no exception." And it's mainly due to the fact that there's a variety of housing types in this area, including multifamily right across the street. This project also advances a general recommendation of the comp plan as adopted in December 2040. And I want to make sure that we don't turn our back on what staff, planning commission, city council, everyone has worked so hard on to get to this point, and then we bring a project before you and we say, "No, we want to punt back to the eighties and the nineties where you have typical infill development, and we just want single-family homes lined up against the street." We feel like this project, and this is the real opportunity to provide a great project in this location. So, the second item that I want to cover is stormwater. So, as any project does in the city, it needs to meet and sometimes exceed both stormwater management and stormwater quality requirements. This project meets it, and this project most likely exceeds it as well from some of the design elements that have been incorporated. We've also instituted as part of this project, and it's termed in the zoning ordinance as low-impact design measures, which includes, you know, an enhanced riparian buffer along the north side of Murray Run that incorporates infiltration measures, because this site is guided by the existing features, and that's why this project is so unique. You know, in a typical situation, much of the parking lot in regards to stormwater may be discharged through a pipe. There's a lot of opportunity on this site to have sheet flow and infiltration measures incorporated, and we've planned it that way. It's important to note that the riparian buffer will be maintained and enhanced with supplemental plannings. Some areas will exceed the required minimum by a great deal, because it's important to note that there's an incredible amount of existing vegetation that's been, that's being preserved as part of this project. So, this project preserves over double of what's required by the ordinance. So, that's an important distinction. You know, street trees will be provided along the public right-of-way, and we've talked about other accommodations that'll be provided with this project, including public sidewalks. It's important to note that on page three of the staff report, that the development would comply with the requirements of the overlay districts, one being the riparian buffer, and two being the floodplain district. So, the staff report indicates that this project would meet both of those requirements. And it's also important to note, and this was part of the discussion during planning commission, but the developer is open and willing to participate in an easement or whatever is needed if the greenway is extended through this area. So, that's one additional link that the city does not have to worry about when the greenway is extended through this area. This project is a go, and this project has a green light for the greenway to come through it. So, the last item that I want to touch on, and this is the final item, and then I'll turn it back over to Mr. Frayland for a few wrap-up comments, and thanks for sticking with me. The third item is traffic. So, always an important item, and important for me to share a few highlights with you this evening. So, in the staff report, we provided a traffic study that outlined, you know, projected trips and turn lane data that provided a lot of important details on the project, okay? So, you know, the city of Roanoke has a threshold that you have to provide a traffic study for. So, you know, there's certain criterias. There's a hundred vehicles in the peak hour, and there's a thousand vehicles per day. You know, that's a minimum. It's important to note that this project only provides a third of those trips. So, even though the threshold is here, we're a third of that level. Now, are we providing additional traffic with this development? Absolutely. You are with any development. But it's important to note that the existing infrastructure can handle the proposed trips, and the proposed trips from this development is less than two percent of the traffics, of the traffic that is currently going down Brandon Avenue today. That's an important distinction. So, it's only a small percentage. We touched briefly on the Brandon Avenue striping. So, this is a new striping plan that was designed by the city of Roanoke and implemented recently. It's an incredible way to move traffic. It's a little bit counterintuitive, because it reduces lanes, but it moves traffic more smoothly through the site. It also provides generous accommodations for bicycle traffic through this area. It also provides generous accommodations for bicycle traffic through this area. So to highlight a couple of other items regarding traffic is, you know, it's so important to understand that this development provides two controlled entrance locations on Brandon Avenue. In lieu of 12 individual driveways with people pulling in, backing in into a short driveway to their particular house at random times and at random locations. Okay? And it's important that we've worked tirelessly up to this point with transportation staff to ensure that they concur with the direction that this is headed, including two controlled access points and turn lanes that we have shown on the development plan. So we feel the project creates better controlled access, minimal increases in traffic, and the development pattern is much more desirable than the by-right development option. And with those final comments, I appreciate you sticking with me through those three important topics of this, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Fraylon.
Thank you, Mr. McAhill, Ms. Phillips, and Mr. Crew. So we're about at the end of our discussion as far as what we're going to offer to you, but please remember respectfully, you have some very knowledgeable and staff that have a lot of expertise in all these areas, and I would feel, I would encourage you to use their brain because they're smart. So, look, we have people working in Roanoke. That's happening. I'm excited about that. I feel like everyone here is excited about that. Unfortunately, many of them don't have the opportunity to live and play in Roanoke, and I don't think that's okay. I think when we start talking about equality of housing and diversity of housing and the need for housing, Roanoke may need to go through some growing pains. And what we're asking here is simply to stay in course with city plan 2040. There's, it's right down the middle, asking for the same thing that city plan 2040 offers. And I recognize change is hard, and I respect your vote either way. It's, I appreciate what you've done to sign up to do this, you know, for our community. Sidewalks are crucial. We can't accentuate them enough. I encouraged, I think in an email, respectfully, all of you to walk the property, particularly at rush hour. And I don't think anybody in good faith could think that it's not better to have a sidewalk there. You see, that's the only missing piece of sidewalk between the Grandin area to Carillion to downtown. It's the only piece, and it's long. We would like to offer to fix that hopefully soon. You know, it's interesting, staff got 10 voice, the last 10 voicemails that staff got regarding this petition, three were against, two were in support, and five were looking for housing. We don't have the housing here. And it's just the fact. And anyway, you know, yes, we're coming back, and, you know, democracy, in my opinion, is largely about change and making things better. And I just leave you with the, what you know better than I, but the U.S. Constitution has 27 amendments, and most of them are great. And so things change in democracy, and so I hope you reconsider. I hope that I am able to provide this type of housing for Roanoke. I certainly will provide another type of housing for Roanoke, and it's really largely up to you tonight. And regardless of your vote, I respect each and every one of you. And so thanks for what you do for this community, and we're happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Oh, Mr. Fraylon's group, anybody? Well, I know we'll have a session, but there may be something that they mentioned that you may want to deal with while it's fresh on your mind. But we can go straight through and...
Are we going to have, ask questions now, or just going to go?
You have a question?
No. Are we going to do it now or at the end?
Well, we're going to have a session after we open the, after we finish opening the hearing. However, I just thought that something they mentioned that you may have or not clear on right now, we can clear that up. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, since you've given us the opportunity. I just have one question for the gentleman from Balzer about the flood mitigation. You mentioned flood mitigation, but I didn't hear exactly what you said you intended to do with that.
So, that's a great question. Thank you so much for offering that. So one of the items that we're providing as part of this project is a BMP with infiltration measures, which basically takes that water and puts it back into the ground. And so there's flooding reductions associated with that, there are stormwater reductions associated with that. And without getting into all the technical details, you know, we've incorporated that as part of the development plan to offset this site's impact through the, through the development of that BMP. Does that help clarify?
Yeah, I did hear that, the infiltration. I just didn't hear the rest of it.
Yes, ma'am.
And hopefully somebody will make that even a little bit more clear or a little bit more concise, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right, rest assured, my colleagues, that nobody's going anywhere. So, we're going to go through, and if there's any question, we can bring Mr. Fraylon's staff back and answer that. All right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I had a question regarding the parking lot. And could you explain a little bit better how you plan to build the parking lot? I didn't quite get it.
How we, how we plan to construct the parking lot?
Yes. What are you going to be using to make sure that the water just goes into the ground?
So, so let's think of it, let's think of it as a layering effect. Okay? So you have the buildings up by the street, okay? And then you have the parking lot behind it, and let's work our way from the street back into the site. Okay? So the first part is the buildings, the second part is the parking lot, and then the third part is the infiltration or BMP, best management practice, that's within the riparian area, and then you have Murray Run. Okay? So you have sheet flow from the parking lot flowing downhill into the infiltration area or into the riparian area. It's getting filtered, it's getting infiltrated, and then it goes into Murray Run from that point. Does that help paint a better picture of how stormwater flows through the site?
Kind of.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go.
Yes.
From your drawings here, you have two entryway going into Brandon. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's two vehicular access points on the Brandon. Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the other option you guys mentioned was 12 houses with 12 individual driveways going into Brandon.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Has there been any consideration of doing rear entry, parking, driving area in the back of it instead of having 12 lanes going into Brandon?
That was discussed, and it is a, it is a challenge to have someone with rear driveway access that's crossing over 10 or 11 other properties to get to their location. It complicates homeowner situation, it complicates easements, and most people do not want to rely on 10 other pieces, 10 other people's properties to cross to get to their house. And so the standard development setup that's kind of the by-right is access off of Brandon Avenue on your property, on your driveway, that's kind of a standard setup.
Okay, I might have additional questions.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Based on what was just said. One question. When you mentioned the 12 fam, single families, that means 12 extra cuts for each driveway onto Brandon?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You are correct.
Just wanted to make sure I heard that. Thank you.
All right, we'll go now to the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing, and... Where is my list of citizens? I think I got it right. All right, we have a number of citizens that wish to be heard. I'll call your name. I'll call them three at a time, three at a time, so you can line up. We're going to give everybody three minutes. There's a little clock up there. When it gets red, that means it's time's up. So, but this is your opportunity to share with us your thoughts. All right. Our first citizen that has signed up is James Settle, followed by John Aubrey Garland and Catherine Greenberg. Those are the first three speakers. All right, Mr. Settle.
Good evening. James Settle, 929 Winona Avenue Southwest. Real quick, we have whoever came here to oppose this project, please stand up real quick. Okay, thank you. I just want to give the timeline. I was here through, since 2017 through this, and 2017, Fraylon Company put that parcel under contract contingent on a rezoning. The rezoning was denied for basically the same concerns we have, people have today. Still, they bought the property, knowing it was not rezoned for the intended project. Fast forward to 2021, proposal is revived, revived with little to make it more appropriate and attractive, but with additional units. Brian McAhill was quoted in the Roanoke Times saying, "There's only so long that we can carry this land without making it perform." What that looks like to me is that in the fall of 2021, that the company is asking the city of Roanoke, its citizens, and its taxpayers to carry this land as they basically get the maximum amount of profit out of this property, passing off the negative externalities onto the public in the form of stormwater, traffic, and aesthetic concerns. I have no problem with multifamily structures on this site, that's how I make my living, but it needs to be a fresh design that takes into account the constraints of the site and promote the urban village concept that makes the surrounding neighborhoods so desirable. Finally, fast forward to 2050, when this development, if approved as currently proposed, will most likely be financially and maybe literally underwater. Please ask the developer to go back to the drawing board to create a new concept for a true Brandon Village, one with small retail, green space, and buildings that are substantial enough to stand the test of time. Thank you.
Thank you. John, go.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, and council, and city manager and staff for this opportunity. I'm here as a previous member of council who voted against Brandon four years ago, Zero Brandon four years ago. I'm here as a developer of apartments, so I'm pro-development, and I'm here as a civil engineer that has done site work design for 45 years. And what I heard in the past 30 minutes from the owner is a great example of how much lipstick you can put on a pig. As you know, as you know, the development plan presented is exactly the same as presented four years ago, except 15 townhouses have been added on the portion of the property previously indicated to be preserved. It was a bad idea four years ago, it's even a worse idea now. Not amending a plan that was previously disapproved with no respect to those affected is disrespectful at best. Both now and previously, all surrounding neighborhood groups have voted to oppose a rezoning in addition to 600-plus petition signatures. We know the city transportation department does not like the ingress egress, right turns out only are very problematic. Anyone wishing to go to Patrick Henry or to Grandin Court or Wasena will have to make an unsafe, illegal U-turn or go up to the Krogers or Towers to turn around. The deceleration lane and stack lane for a left turn in the development, which is the only way to get into it if you go, if you're traveling west, is very safe and awkward location. If you've driven that area, you see that the downhill merging lane from Main Street to Brandon, there's a difference in elevation between the westbound and eastbound, and it'll make a terrible way to get into the development. And he's, I mentioned, it was mentioned controlled exits, there are uncontrolled exits. Riparian buffers should not be allowed to be reduced below the 50-foot required by the ordinance. Averages of a riparian buffer are not appropriate. This is an impaired stream and one-prone flooding already. The property is zone R7, which was implemented as the appropriate development opportunities for this property. Planning Department has gone on record indicating that Zero Brandon does not meet the intent of the neighborhood comprehensive plan. That was said specifically at the last meeting. R7 by right development allows single-family lots of certain sizes and dimensions, and any subdivision of this property would require detailed plans to be submitted to the city for review and comment. If the city follows VDOT driveway, street design standards, then 12 separate house driveways would not be allowed at this location, as it was not allowed on Brambleton Avenue's newest subdivision just up the street. Don't be fooled in the thinking that there's only two options. And about infiltration, I would ask, has the geology been looked at? Because if you dig about six inches into that soil, you're going to hit rock, because rock prevalent all over that area. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mayor Lee, I'm Kathy Greenberg. I went back and listened to some very interesting tape. If you think three hours of city council meeting is very interesting tape, but it was from April 17, 2017. The developer stood up in front of the council group and said, "Now you can put a road in here, and we can put a road in here, and we can put houses back there, we can cut down all of these trees, and this is not a threat." Well, I've been around long enough to know that when somebody says, "And this is not a threat," guess what it is? It is a threat, and that's what you've seen tonight. That's Plan B. And Mayor Lee asked the question, "Can you put something behind?" And John Garland mentioned, "Yes, just like they did on Brambleton." And actually, you do not cross, these street or the driveways do not interfere with the other properties on this, in this subdivision, and I will pass this around if you don't mind, but that's a picture of the driveways. And these all front Brambleton Avenue, and they are approximately 25 to 40 feet off the front of Brambleton, but the driveways are all behind, and so that could be done. Thank you. The last thing I want to mention is talk about being a part of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan says, "Every neighborhood should be an active participant in determining its future and involve neighborhood organizations, civic groups, businesses in the development and implementation of neighborhood plans." You've got a petition with over 600 citizens signing it, and I think it's appropriate to note that the developer had not reached out to anyone in the neighborhood in the past four years, from 2017 until recently, when the planning commission advised him to do reach-out to neighborhood groups. My understanding, he did offer a Zoom meeting for those of us who have property close to the proposed rezoning, but they did not come to any of the neighborhood association meetings. They did not solicit input from the neighborhood in any of that time to talk about what might be palpable, what, and what, what we could all agree on in some sort of compromise, and I think that speaks volumes. So I'm urging you to vote in opposition of this. Thank you.
All right, our next three speakers are, I think it's Dan Tapscott, Thomas Myers, and Alexander Boone.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Lee. Can you hear me okay with my mask on?
Yeah, we can hear. It's difficult, but we can hear.
Okay.
We can hear.
You sure you can hear okay? All right, I'm Diane Tapscott. I live at 1019 Sherwood Avenue. All right, I'm Diane Tapscott, I live at 1019 Sherwood Avenue. My, my grandfather built the house there in 1925, so we've had four generations of our family living there. My mother grew up in the house and I, my son grew up in the house, he's present tonight. It's our second rodeo with city council, and I apologize because you have so many pressing matters. Mr. Frayland has argued that he's providing jobs for people with this project, and he will provide affordable housing to people that sorely need it. The truth is, this is really all about greed. It's seven and a half acres that Frayland bought when his rezoning was turned down by you all in 2017 for a mere $150,000. The houses on Brandon right now are selling for $225,000, some of them. It's also about taking down a forest on one of the most dangerous intersections in the city of Roanoke. There have been three major automobile accidents at this intersection between September 23rd of this year and October 5th. And as I told you in my letter to each one of you, I have pictures of those, I don't have them tonight, but we have pictures. So I know people need affordable housing. There are many other places in Southwest City that cry out for development that Mr. Frayland could have looked at. They would not require animals to relocate, and the green space is what most urban areas are opting to protect and promote for urban cooling. My husband and I tend to the flowers, we have planted the Zero Brandon Avenue intersection around our neighborhood sign. We have to be so careful there, and we did it all summer, taking water down to the flowers. The only good thing that Mr. Frayland has offered so far to our neighborhood is the addition of the sidewalks. I've spent several weeks walking the neighborhood, and you would never want to walk Brandon Avenue. Frayland says that his townhouses will sell for $250,000, and I guess the 12 houses might sell for that, too. I wonder who would want to buy a brand-new home on such a discombobulated place to motor out into. For no added cost, Mr. Frayland will throw in traffic accidents, lots of noise from the road. Let's not forget the police, fire trucks, and ambulances that are supposed to sound their cheery sirens upon entering the intersection. Oh, and check out how close his plans are to the road. I'm sure that none of you would really want to live there. Frayland's folly, but he's made it all a problem. He sits back and he hopes his name will carry him through with the new city council. He has all the income in the world to keep fighting and to have his way, too. He should be donating this land and not developing it. I invite you, Mayor Lee, and city council to set the bar as high as you did in 2017. Thank you.
Tom Myers, 1019 Sherwood Avenue, Roanoke. When I was out getting petition signed against the rezoning of the 54 apartments and 15 townhouses on Brandon Avenue at the intersection, I met a young woman that just moved to Roanoke from Charleston, South Carolina. Now she lives in Raleigh Court. I was explaining the situation at the intersection at Brandon, Main, and Sherwood, and right away she signed the petition. The reason she signed the petition is that in Charleston, South Carolina, they had the same situation with apartment complex that was built at an intersection in the surrounding neighborhoods that was passed by the city council. She said it devastated the intersection and the surrounding neighborhoods when it was built. The apartments caused flooding, more traffic accidents, more traffic backups and delays. That was the reason she moved to Roanoke and could not believe it was happening again. The last thing she said to me was, "The city council of Charleston, South Carolina regretted that they ever voted for the apartment complex." So let's keep Roanoke safe, keep the woodlands, make the right decision for all of Roanoke, the star city of the South. We can learn the lesson from this, that the mistake that Charleston, South Carolina made. Vote with your heart. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and Honorable City Council. My name is Alexander Boone, and I'm excited to be developing a number of projects in the city of Roanoke. I am here tonight because I care about this issue. I drive Brandon Avenue every day, and I do want to disclose that I have a number of businesses with Mr. Frayland, and, but I have nothing to do with this project, I've never had an interest in this project, and I never will. I'm here because I really care about this gateway to our city. I've got four reasons why I think we need to positively look at what can happen with this project. And I get development, and I get that it does cause angst with people. I actually have 12 acres being developed adjacent to my house right now. Would I prefer it to stay green? Absolutely. But at the end of the day, our developer is going to create housing that people need in this area. But getting back to this project, I've got four main reasons to make me excited about this project, to gain understanding the angst that comes with development and the change. Number one, this is a gateway to so many areas in Roanoke City. It's a gateway to Brandon, to Raleigh Court, to Main Street, to Towers. There's so many areas that could be, could, that we get to from this area and that can create a great gateway. This is a gateway that we can develop this land that needs to be developed. You know, it's a tough parcel, I think everybody knows that. Valley Bank and BNC Bank called me in 2010 and 2011 and asked me to conserve, to buy it, but I couldn't do it because I really couldn't figure out how to make it work. Obviously, things weren't great in 2010 and 11, but it just didn't, it didn't work for me, and I really applaud what the Frayland team has done to try to create something out of this parcel that is at a gateway that needs to be developed. Number two, if, if people believe there's a traffic issue, this is an excellent opportunity to work during the development process that the Frayland team will go through with planning to, to solve and revise traffic and use the tax revenue that will come from this project to improve the traffic flow in this area. Number three, and critically, we've got to have affordable housing. We've got to have more housing, not just affordable housing, any type of housing. We're losing so many people in Roanoke because of the lack of housing. I shared with the planning commission, I talked to somebody who's on a board of a company in the Riverside Complex, it's a startup, they can't hire people because they can't find places to live. And that's, that is the truth here, that we've got to have more housing. And number four, at the end of the day, the Frayland team can develop this property by right, and the proposed project is far superior to that because of, it honors the comprehensive plan for, or city plan of 2040. It creates a village center, it creates affordable housing, and you hate to say it, $1,000 a month is affordable housing today. We have an affordable housing crisis. And in that being said, I ask you to, to embrace this plan and take into consideration the concerns that the residents have voiced, but move forward towards a more comprehensive city plan for housing. Thank you.
All right, our next speakers are Adil Khali, Khali. They're not here. Followed by Walt Derry. And following Mr. Derry is Frida Katz-Cott.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and council members. I really appreciate your opening this up for discussion. My concern, as yours in the beginning of your meeting, was safety. And I'm concerned with the safety of the plan. The traffic that we've been talking about, that it has been adding, nobody has yet brought up the fact that in order for these people coming out of the division to not turn left, they have to turn right and make a U-turn. In order to make the U-turn, they can go quite a ways to Towers and do it legally, or they can cut across Brandon, right where they just did the new paving that everybody's bragging about, which is really, really well-marked. And there is, first of all, a bike lane that they would have to cross over. Second of all, they'd be crossing into a small stretch of road in order to make a left turn onto Main for their first U-turn. So if they turn left on Main and then they go their first left, they are passing a school, they are in a school zone. They are in Wasina Park, Wasina Elementary School Zone, whether they take Sherwood or Windsor. Either the front of the school or the back of the school is where we are adding traffic. This is unsafe. The other thing that is unsafe is the fact that those streets they would be put onto have three lanes and two lanes have parked cars. So there is a one-travel lane road going down that they are, this traffic is going to be going into. And the people that have it do the maneuvers, but people that don't know how to do it are not going to be able to. Thank you very much. I hope that you vote with your conscience on safety.
Walt.
Hey, Mayor, council members. My name is Walt Derry, I live at 939 Oakwood Drive. I'm also a owner of a general contracting firm that's located here in the city. And my major curds, I'm not against development at all, and I'm fine with the, at, with single-family development. My biggest concerns are traffic issues of how that the traffic's going to be directed in and out, as a, someone that travels that way quite frequently with going to Patrick Henry and the neighborhoods through there. The other thing is just the density issue and what that will bring to the traffic getting in and out with the only one-way in and one-way out with the left-hand turn. So those are the, my main concerns. I'm not against the property being used for single-family homes. And the other thing is just how, and some of it was explained with the repairing buffer being exposed and the different things with the ENS measures. So my biggest concerns are the traffic issues, and they've not been really addressed, and with the new traffic pattern, I feel like it's going to be even harder with the left-hand lane that's been reduced down with the new traffic pattern. There has been three homes that have been infilled since, in the last 12 months, too, on Brandon Avenue with single-family, with driveways on Brandon Avenue, within a mile of that location as well. And so I would ask for you to vote no. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm here as an elected representative on the Soil and Water Conservation Board representing Roanoke City. My background is in insurance, and part of what the Soil and Water Conservation Boards do is to look at floodplains and protect our water and make sure that our soils stay on the ground and don't go into the water. I'll agree with Mr. Frayland that things have changed in the last four years. The times, they are a-changing, and city council recognized this earlier this month when you all passed a resolution with it being a climate emergency, and directed your staff to move as quickly as possible to take measures to make a difference. This is your opportunity to make a difference tonight, because that land and those woodlands are doing a very important job right now. They are protecting the people downtown, downstream from flooding. And not only that, but I think most of you all know I get out and knock on a lot of doors. And I've knocked on the doors of the neighborhood that's between where those woodlands are and Towers Mall, and that's transient, low-income community. The exact type of community, a marginalized community that doesn't have a neighborhood association, that would suffer the most from the loss of those woodlands. You know, when we have weather now in the 90 degrees, they don't even call it a heat wave here, it's just summer. But this past summer in the Northwest, where they're not used to having high heat, they had a huge heat wave. Deaths were three times what they used to be. This is a matter of life and death. They don't know what the floodplains is, nobody knows. I can tell you that from the insurance industry. The insurance industry is tapping out, not covering things that they used to do. They're calling it force majeure. We just had, just like a month ago, five to six inches that fell suddenly in Roanoke. We don't know how to make the plans right now, that's why we have to respond. But those woodlands are our insurance. They're insurance protecting us from flooding, it's insurance protecting those people in the marginalized community from dying from heat exhaustion, because those are the type of people that would not be able to afford the high electricity bills to keep the AC on. So this is the wrong project at the wrong time, and we are counting on city council to protect us and those woodlands. We need that insurance at this time, and I appreciate this opportunity to address you all. I'm going to leave some papers with you. Bill, I'll email them to you, I'll also email them to you. This has to do with a different subject, with the Mountain Valley Pipeline, a deadline next week. So thank you for your time.
All right, our next three speakers, which Madam Clerk reflected, these are our final three.
Yes.
Speakers. Mrs. Joyce Wall. Ms. Jackie Stanley. And Helen Meredith.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council and staff. I'm Joyce Wall, President of the Roanoke Regional Chamber of Commerce. The chamber's mission is to improve the community and economy by maximizing the business climate of the current generation for future generations. We do that by influencing public policy, making connections and referrals, and helping small business grow. I'm here to highlight the importance of a continued strong business climate, which Virginia's Blue Ridge generally enjoys. To that end, it's very important for businesspeople to know that when they enter into a project, enter a project in the city of Roanoke, and it meets the city's requirements and regulations as set forth by the locality, they can be reasonably assured that their project will be approved and move forward. It's both a trust and a reliability factor that's important when doing business in any locality. Why have dedicated staff and volunteer representatives who serve on the planning commission, if you don't trust them to do their due diligence on any project that may become before them? As, you know, this may be one example here today. Now, I understand that much has changed from several years ago, but again, the project has been approved and has been gone through the planning process and has been recommended for approval. Projects that meet or exceed rezoning requirements deserve the opportunity to proceed, and I would ask that you keep this in mind as you consider acting on all projects in the city. Thank you, as always, for your continued service to our community. Please know how much and how appreciative we are of the work that you do on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I had this great speech planned, but after listening to people tonight, I think I'm going to scrap it. My family's lived on Mount Vernon near Brandon for almost 18 years, and what people have said tonight about the traffic, I wholeheartedly agree with. The changes that the city made earlier this year, I think actually limited the number of cars that can pass from Main Street all the way to Colonial. of cars that can pass from Main Street all the way to Colonial because they made way for a turn lane and a bike lane. So instead of having two lanes each way, there's now only one lane each way. So it takes longer to get from Main Street to Colonial. Secondly, I was never as pleased with council members as I was when I was here in 2017 because, one by one, council members voted no to the proposal because each one listened to the majority of voices in this room. And I'm asking you to do it again. Please.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, City Council members. I'm Helen Meredith, 2111 Westover Avenue. Here, I really don't have that much more to offer. I just, I urge you to read John Garland's Six Reasons to Oppose the Brandon Avenue Rezoning. It's very concise. This is the first time I'm sort of aware that Roanoke has a housing crisis. I would urge the city of Roanoke to get with Isabel Thornton on restoration housing. She's doing a great job for Roanoke restoring, renovating, rehabbing, whatever you want to call abandoned buildings. And I think that would be a great way to save some of those neighborhoods that have a lot of abandoned dwellings. And also, I'd love for Mr. Fraylin to build that sidewalk along Brandon. I think that's a great idea, as long as he doesn't cut down all of the trees. I think we need, we need more green space in Roanoke. I just think right now is not the time to put in any more housing in an area. As Mr. Garland said, there's a reason why that whole property has never been developed. And, you know, you can, you can read about it. And I think Frida had a good point about all of the weather that we have here, the rain, and we need that green space to help mitigate all of the flooding and everything that happens. And we know that there is a problem down on Brandon with flooding when we have a lot of rain at one particular time. So I urge you all to vote no. Thank you.
Thank all of you all that came forward to share with us your thoughts tonight. And we will now close the public hearing, and I will refer to my colleagues now. Yes, sir?
I could, Mr. Mayor. This is my first time with a rezoning that's come before council that might have two sides of the issue, so to speak. So often, we have these rezonings that come with 6-0, 7-0 votes from Planning Commission. This one is a little bit different. So if I might, with a little liberty, remind council of a few things from a legal standpoint. First of all, council's action in approving or denying this application is a legislative action. As a result, it's given great deference by the courts. However, I would note that it's very important, whether in support or if you have concerns regarding the application, that we articulate those reasons. Now, while public support or the neighborhood's opposition to a particular application is something to consider, that shouldn't be the sole reason. There can be other reasons, and a multitude of reasons for saying yes or no. And quite frankly, very often, any decision made in a rezoning involves multiple reasons. So as council deliberates and considers and inquires as to questions, I would just ask that you articulate those reasons so that when we have a final decision of this council, that it is indeed a good, solid decision based on sound planning principles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spencer. All right. With that said, we will close the public hearing, and I will, again, ask my colleagues for their comments and questions that they have with regards to this. So who wants to start?
I guess all of us have a question.
Well, we'll go right down the line. Do you want to do that? All right. We'll start with you, Ms. Carr.
Oh, all right. Well, thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight and sharing your perspectives. I was not on council when this first came around, although I was aware of it peripherally. And I have listened to the transcript from that meeting, which was very insightful. And I appreciate all the emails and phone calls and meetings and different perspectives that everyone has given. Who knew such a wooded area would draw so much passion from our community? When I look at this wooded area and have walked it, it is dense. The other night when I walked it, and this was before the cold wave that we had, it was markedly cooler than the surrounding areas. So I noticed the temperature drop, which was in part because of all the trees. But it reminds me of another property on Orange Avenue that's a cemetery that's also overgrown and tangled and, quite frankly, a concern, which cannot be developed and is distinctive from this because this can be developed. So I have a variety of questions that I want to ask, and I can direct these to Mr. Fraylin or some of your team, whomever you feel best to answer them. And I want to start out with some environmental questions. We've had a lot of perspectives offered on this tonight. And in fairness, I will say that I posed some of these questions to Mr. Fraylin earlier because I wanted him to think about these. So perhaps this question is most directly to you, Mr. Fraylin. You've, you've observed this land for a long time. Many people here tonight have described your connection with this land because you've lived here a long time or you have family-owned property nearby, and it's, for a variety of reasons, very special to you. So I wanted to ask you, as you have observed this land through the years, if you could describe for me what inspires you about this property? What inspired your original concept that you brought forward? What inspired you to buy the property? What do you see as the assets of this property?
Thank you. First of all, I don't want to go on with a monologue and bore everybody, but the fact is, if development does not happen where there's utilities and in the urban corridors, growth will happen and it will create sprawl, and that takes more land. And believe it or not, I'm a conservationist by nature. One day, I'd like to donate a lot of land for conservation. I am a developer. I enjoy creative envisioning, and I enjoy providing housing for all types of folks. And what this is, in my opinion, and has always been for my lifetime, is a blighted piece of land in a well-traveled urban corridor at the intersection of many neighborhoods and many employment bases. To me, it looks like something's wrong with Roanoke. There's a park a quarter-mile away. So I know there's a demand for housing. I know that quality and the equality of housing is a need in the city. And I know that particular piece of property isn't particularly safe because there's no sidewalk. So yes, let's not, let's make sure we're clear. I tell people in a joking way, I've got to make this work because I don't know how to do anything else. I have to be a developer. It's what I know how to do. It's what I was sort of known my whole life. But the fact of the matter is, I look at a piece of property, and Mr. McHale and I talk about it, and Mr. Crewe, and no, this isn't a matter of going bankrupt if we don't develop it, or our financial well-being isn't relying on this. This is actually a fairly small project in our portfolio. However, it's Roanoke City. I'm from Roanoke City. I love Roanoke City, and I think Roanoke City truly needs this development. So sorry for the long-winded answer. I hope that did some of that.
We've heard tonight about the importance of reaching out to community stakeholders, and four years have transpired in between the original concept and this concept. I'm curious to know, over that time, how input from community stakeholders, citizens, has helped shape your vision for developing this land?
Well, first of all, I think it's interesting, and you folks, as elected officials, see this as much or more than I, but I've been doing this for 20 years now. And this isn't the first meeting like this. In fact, this is sparsely attended compared to some of the meetings I've been in. And it's all sort of the same. Local neighborhood does not want it, not in my backyard. And I don't fault them a bit. That is normal, and it's what public debate is all about. But what you don't see are the days I walk down a street and people that vote in Roanoke City say, can you believe you got turned down when Planning Commission voted 11-1? That's two together. It was 7-0 and 4-1, so 11 to 1. And I get these comments from all kinds of people in all kinds of walks of life in this city. So the stakeholders are here, for sure. They're up here, and they're watching, going to be watching the news tonight, and they're everywhere. And so I hear all the time, I cannot believe Roanoke City can't develop this property. Now, everybody has a good opinion, so I think everybody should be heard, but those are the stakeholders I've heard from.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about the natural environment, but also, you know, Roanoke's emphasis on not only equitable, affordable housing, but also environmentally friendly or green builds.
Right.
And I know that construction is very challenging right now because of supply, because of availability, because of cost. But I'm curious, as you were going over the design concepts, if you could talk a little bit about what, if any, kind of green design you're incorporating in the proposed apartments and townhomes.
Great question. I'm going to let Mr. Crewe handle most of that, and then I may add on to what he says.
Okay. So from a, you know, from a building code standpoint, let's talk about the architecture first. So from an architecture standpoint, you know, this is current new construction. They just adopted a new building code, that all of this construction is a part of that. And it's every year or every, however many years when they put, bring forth a new building code, the insulation requirements are additional, the energy requirements are lower, and it is inherently built into the system that the, the construction is more efficient, and it's better construction than it has been historically. Okay? So that's kind of the first part of it. From a site side, so that's an architectural side, from the site side, you know, this project was completely designed around the elements that were already there. You know, so we have existing street frontage. We have an existing Murray Run. We have existing vegetation on site. Well, how do we, how do we incorporate those existing natural elements into the project, make the project feasible, make sure we meet the intent of the city? And that's what's shown on the development plan, where buildings are pulled up to the street. It activates the buildings. It activates the people walking down the street. The buildings aren't pushed back to the very back of the property. That park is, has 15 townhomes and is mostly preserved. So what that allows us to do is, we preserve what's there, we meet the intent of the comp plan, and we have the ability to provide twice as much preservation of existing green space as you would with a standard development. And so there's a lot of those factors that work together, but, you know, the existing features of the existing street frontage, Murray Run, the existing vegetation, they all play. That was a starting point, when we started down this process and looked at the development plan, and what are the opportunities here?
Well, I appreciate that, but I think I'm specifically asking about the materials going into the building and, and how those reflect green builds. Do you understand?
I think I can help. And so, first of all, we're talking about the overall environment, and so more tree canopy obviously does help because we're, we're having double the tree canopy. It's, you know, just to speak frankly, it's a little hard to have our cake and eat it too sometimes. So I want to provide rents at an affordable price. Green building is a great thing. It's not yet economically feasible to provide lower rents with green housing. However, what I think is informative is this. The demands, as Mr. Crewe, Ben here, alluded to for the building code are very different today than, say, in 1970. So, for example, we have to have a 14-seer in the state of Virginia. Okay. Who pays for that? Well, that, I buy the unit, and so it lowers costs. This is, and I sent this today, but this, this is on the Energy Conservation website. It saves people who rent. It allows them to save more money because their electric bill goes down. Okay? So it uses less fuel, whether it be generated from nuclear or coal or whatever, but it uses less energy. And then we can do things like Ben talked about, you know, in the, in the development itself, with, with extra tree canopy and extra trench with, with Filterra-type devices there to, to help the environment in that way. The other thing we can do, at your request we can, is we can put concrete in lieu of asphalt for the parking lots. What does that do? It lowers heat. Does it do it substantially? No. But if you ask us to do that, we will do that. And so we're, I have trouble being all things to all people all the time because I just can't do that. However, I do believe in the quality of housing, in new housing and affordable price, and I'd like to do everything I possibly can simultaneously to help the environment. So I hope, I hope that helps, and that's, that's really basically the biggest extent of what I can do from a green housing standpoint.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a little bit about housing density because I think some of the concern that's been expressed is the number of units on this property. My understanding is that it's, it's about average for what can be put on seven acres. And I think I heard one of you say earlier that you could build on this amount of acreage, you could go up to, was it over 100 units? Is that you, Mr. McHale? But you're actually describing 69 units. You also talked about how the townhomes would be a future development. What, what do you anticipate? What does future mean?
Well, well, we could develop that by rate at a different time should you elect to, to zone this. It's a transit, so the Village Center concept has a lot of transitional neighborhood-type housing, you know, transition from single-family, multifamily, townhomes, and, and a variety of housing types. And so we felt that providing that for-sale type of housing would be a great transition to a single-family use. And so that's what that came from. And so we didn't feel like it was appropriate at the time to offer the highest maximum density on that property. So when you deal with multifamily, some developers can get up to 20 units an acre. Now, that site would be hard to do that, but I can tell you, in good faith, it can be created to be far denser, more dense than what it, what we proposed. I don't think that's appropriate for that site. I mean, I don't want a concrete, you know, sort of village in there. I want something charming that I'm proud of. This is, again, this is my city, too, where I grew up, and I have larger developments, but this isn't the place for that, and I don't want to put my name on that. So that's, that's what that's about.
Traffic seems to be the elephant in the room that everyone's talking about, and, but I would say of the traffic concerns that I've heard, the greatest concern is no left turn out of this development. left turn out of this development. And I don't know, because of the configuration of this, of the street out there, if that's even a possible thing. I know, when I was listening to the transcript from four years ago, Councilman Best Pitch, who I think is -- Bill, are you still with us?
Yes, sir.
All right.
He's over here.
All right. Talked about, you know, what it would take to remove all of that and create a roundabout in that area. And I know some of that had to do with, I don't know if Mr. Jamison or somebody from transportation is here, but some of it had to do with the rise?
The topography.
The topography, and something between 4% and 6% to 8% of the rise, because generally, roundabouts are flat. And that there would have to be some work done to address the topography issue there, which is not particularly your issue, but it's a bigger issue in that area. So, I'm just kind of, I don't expect you to have an answer for that, because I think you've tried to address that with staff, and I think that's been sufficiently addressed. Although, there doesn't seem to be a winning solution in any regard for whether it's Option B or Option A, because you've still got to have entry into the property.
Yeah. If I might just talk about traffic for just a second. So, there is no perfect solution in an urban corridor traffic situation. Roanoke City, just about every intersection in that urban corridor does not meet these guidelines that we hear about. Today, they don't. And so, what we're talking about isn't, hey, this is something you can't, you just can't develop because of, either by right or by propose. What we're talking about right now is, what is actually safer and better for the community? And what the studies came back and said, by right or by what we intend to do here, if you so choose, the traffic vol, this is the most important part, but most of the volumes are the same. What it's saying is, is since you have controlled intersections, these aren't my words, this is in the staff report, that it better mitigates traffic. So, whether you're coming down, you know, 460 at 5:00 PM or 8:00 AM, none of, traffic's just not ideal ever anywhere. But it's really a matter of what's the better choice as we grow our community. And please don't forget about pedestrian traffic. Right? Do you want to add any of that?
I think we've covered most of the additional questions.
But again, the traffic engineer is here, and you can ask him, yeah.
Well, I guess the, because I need to, we need to move on to my other colleagues. I just wanted to share a comparison on, this back to density.
Sure.
And I know that the street layout here is different, because we don't have the same configuration of intersections and such. But I was curious this week about another part of our city, where we have a high density of apartment units, of affordable housing, on a very small acreage. On Grandin Road, between Windsor and Shirley Avenue, there are four different properties on about five and a half acres. And on those five and a half total, there are 100 and, close to 170 units, on less than seven acres. So, I'm saying this to say, setting the traffic issue aside for right now, we have parts of our city where we have high density of mixed residential living, whether it's rental properties or single-family homes. And Grandin Road is a good example of that. It's developed further along. In some ways, it may be older. I think it was designed at a time when streetcars came to, you know, deliver people who were employed elsewhere and were living in some of these apartments, and it was kind of a one-stop shop for people to drive through and find their way home. But I wanted to just share that comparison with the general public, because this is not a unique situation where we're adding, we're not, you're not even suggesting adding the density that you could add, but about 2/3 of that. I will say, I have some concerns about the, I appreciate the amount of green space and the issues that have been worked through around Murray Run and the potential development for greenway access there. I still have some concerns about potential flooding, which is why I'm glad you addressed some of the concerns around what kind of permeable material to use on the ground for parking. But I'm gonna stop there, and I look forward to hearing questions from my other colleagues, because I could go on all night.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call on Councilman Best Pitch, who is here. He can't be seen, but he's here. And, Councilman Best Pitch, you have--
Thank you, Mr. Fraylon and your associates. Thank everyone who's taken the time to speak up this evening, to let your voice be heard. Mr. Fraylon and company have presented some very good reasons why this is a good project for the city of Roanoke. We need more housing. We need what we sometimes refer to as middle housing or affordable housing. And I personally don't have concerns about how it fits in to the other residences that are in the area. Personally, I have concerns about the design. My concern is about safety. And I went to the City Plan 2040 to make sure I understood exactly what it said about our streets. And the key sentence I found is, quote, "All city streets must be complete streets that provide for safe, effective, and attractive connections for all users." Now, I hope Mr. Cal can help me, or if there's somebody from our traffic division that can help, because I understand that the traffic analysis that was part of the report was done by our staff. Am I right about that, Mr. Cal?
There are a couple of different pieces of information in the staff report, and I'm actually letting our folks kind of work their way up here, and they can tell you the difference with those two different parts.
Okay. I think I'm having a little trouble hearing you, but I think you're saying that they did some work in other areas. My specific question is around this. At the time that the traffic analysis was done, there was an expectation that Plan B, as it's been called, might build 13 single-family homes. And now, we're talking about 12. But at 13 homes, the traffic analysis says that that would be expected to generate 10 trips during the morning peak hours and 13 during the afternoon peak hours. Afternoon, you expect a trip for every house that's there. Now, we're talking about a total of 69 dwelling units. And it says that would generate, or could, I thought it was interesting that the wording was changed to it could generate approximately 25 trips during the morning peak hours and 32 during the afternoon, which is only about 2 and 1/2 times the number of 3, with 12 or 13 houses, whatever we're talking about, even though that the number of units is five times as much. As a matter of fact, if we're talking about 12, increasing it to 69 is by 5.75 times as many dwelling units. So, why would we think that the trips during the peak hours would only go up 2 and 1/2 times instead of something closer to 5 times as much?
So, these numbers are derived from the Institute of Transportation Engineers Manual on Trip Generation. These are numbers that are a result of studies that have occurred nationwide. They are a calculation, essentially, on the land use that is being proposed. Specifically speaking, as opposed to a single-family home versus an apartment complex, I could speculate that the variety of household, the folks that are in the household using a vehicle might vary, and that is why there's that discrepancy that you could pull out, point out.
Well, I guess it might. Also, it seems equally possible that it might not very much. So, I just think that, and I understand, as Art has been pointing out, that still, even at 50 trips in the morning and 60 or so in the afternoon peak hours, that's still a very small percentage of the traffic that's currently using Brandon, and certainly the improvements, as Art has been mentioning by a number of people, the restriping and so forth, and the pavement has greatly improved the traffic flow to that area. The general flow of traffic on Brandon and Brambleton will make turning left into development difficult during morning and afternoon peak hours, even with the left-turn lane that has been added now to the plan. In other words, if you're coming westbound on Brandon, and you want to turn left, you want to use that lane, there's almost always somebody coming, either they're making a right turn on red out of Brambleton, or they're coming with the green light on Brandon. And I'm just a little concerned that people will take some imprudent actions with a high risk of accidents to make that turn, when maybe they should wait a little longer. And I also think that, as has been pointed out by others, if everybody does come out of the property and make a right turn, they're gonna need to find pretty quickly a place to make a U-turn if they want to travel west on Brandon. And again, I think the likelihood is that some of those options would not be the safest when we want. And quite frankly, if the left-turn lane is there, I really would expect that we're gonna have people who come out there and decide that, even though it says right turn only, they can zip across Brandon and get into that left-turn lane and make the left turn that they want on Brandon and to head west. The last thing I wanted to mention is users. The state that I read talks about all users. We've talked about vehicle traffic. We've talked about pedestrians. We've talked about bicycles. Users include transit passengers. And Brandon is an arterial street served by a valid method. Walking across Brandon to catch a westbound bus cannot be considered as safe for pedestrians, but that doesn't mean that people won't try. If they're coming westbound and exiting the bus at that location and trying to come across Brandon to get back into the development, that doesn't seem to me to be a safe place for pedestrians to do that. But that doesn't mean that they won't try. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all the comments that I have.
All right. Thank you. Now, I'll go to the other room.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank Mr. Fraylon and his staff for the presentation. It cleared up a lot of questions I had before we even got started. And also, thank you to all of you that came out. You just don't know how appreciative we are that you came out, took the time to voice your support or opposition. And for all the texts and emails, I tried to respond. I couldn't keep up. I know it might be a little late, but I still plan to respond. But I want to let you know, I appreciate it. And I just want to say, thank you to the Planning Commission. They had a hard and tough job. Their task was a lot more difficult than ours, because they had to weed through all of the facts and all of the information that they got. And I just also want to say that I certainly understand personally the need for affordable housing. I have a friend that just rented an apartment last Monday. She is not on Facebook. She asked me to post it on the market on Facebook. I posted it. It was a one-bedroom on Dale Avenue. She posted it, I posted it around 9:00. At 12 o'clock, I had to take it down, because she had 47 inquiries. And I said, you're gonna have to take it down. So, I understand the need for affordable housing. I also understand the change in your neighborhood. Like me, when I moved to my house, that Walmart that's at Valleview was a cornfield. I remember, you know, this council, and I remember Mr. Garland coming to speak in favor of tearing down Huff Lane. I remember it well, because she brought your little poster and said you used to live in the neighborhood. And--
I did.
Well, I remember that you came in and you were in favor of that, but--
I was tearing down Huff Lane.
Okay. All right. Well, I remember. And like I said, I understand what it means for someone to come into your neighborhood. And now, it's a restaurant and a hotel. And I said, well, I'm never gonna eat at that restaurant. So, I understand the frustration of development when it's in your neighborhood. I will also say that we've had multiple questions asked about the flooding and the flood mitigation. I think they've made an attempt to try to answer it. Not sure that I'm satisfied with the answers on the flood mitigation. Not sure that I'm satisfied with the issues of traffic. Like, we've determined here tonight, I think that traffic is going to be an issue, one way or the other, whether it's developed with single-family or with multiple. I have one question that has not been answered, and that is probably for the city staff. And I did reach out to the city staff to ask them about the traffic. I'm wondering if anybody can tell me if we have other areas in the city with that type of barrier, with one left or right-hand turn, that we can speak to and maybe address the concerns that have been raised here about the feasibility and the safety. Mr. Cal, are you familiar with any other areas in our city that we have the same barrier and that you have to come out, other than Hersberger, and I know the Krispy Kreme, I thank God for that, because otherwise I'd be as big as this chair. But you can only come out of there and make a right-hand turn.
There are certainly in areas, predominantly commercial areas, that are high-traffic areas, such as what you've just mentioned. There are certainly raised medians that actually prohibit, obviously, maneuvers that are left-turn maneuvers out of those businesses. I don't know if we have any that are apartment complexes there like that.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was anything that would give me an idea of how it operates, how it's working, how it's not working.
Yeah. The best examples would be those examples that are, again, the higher-density, high-volume streets that are in our larger commercial corridors. You've mentioned one of those with the Hersberger. Certainly along Orange, you have areas that are like that as well, where, again, someone exiting the business or exiting a hotel or whatever it might be, would actually have to make a right-turn movement, go down to the next intersection and presumably turn, if they were going back in the other direction. Could not make any type of left into the development. They'd actually have to come around and come in and enter from the right in those instances. But those are predominantly commercial activities, and again, probably carry even more traffic than perhaps what is in Brandon as well.
So, I appreciate Mr. Spencer bringing us back to center as what we are discussing, and this is the rezoning. I'm just wondering, because of its mixed-use plan use development, and we have to pretty much, I mean, the developer will have to use the plan that they bring forward, is there any room or flexibility for any changes in the traffic pattern? That seems to be the overlying issue here. Can anyone address that, or they've tried, or we just can't get to a resolution? If not, then I'll just move on to my colleagues. But I just feel like we haven't heard about any possibilities or any solutions.
I think there, and certainly the folks from the planning staff can address this further, because there have been discussions, both the first time the item was heard, as well as the most recent with the Planning Commission, as to other options. And the reality is, there are no other options for access into or out of this site. In other words, being able to accommodate left-turn movements, there just is not that option. There was discussion of the, sort of the paper street that's right next to this property, which itself doesn't allow any kind of left-- which itself doesn't allow any kind of left-turn movements either. The signalization and the geometrics don't work for that area. So, regardless of what happens on this site, whether it's single-family homes, multifamily homes, or whatever there may be, what you're likely to see is right turn out, right turn in. There just is not a way, given the geometrics. Somebody mentioned the idea of the roundabout. The reason that a roundabout has not seriously been considered in this area is certainly because of the topographical considerations, which derive directly to the multiples of millions of dollars it would take to actually construct something in that regard. And I don't know even if that would address or solve this particular issue, but certainly is not tenable for even 60-something units to actually pursue that option. So, no, I think regardless of how this property is developed, it's going to be right turn-in movements and right turn-out movements that you're probably seeing the type of access that's available here.
Thank you, Mr. Cowell. It's unfortunate that we've reached a situation that's untenable because that would be a good solution, and it might fix some of the concerns and some of the problems. Seems like that was the only issue in April, or not the only, but one of the issues in April 2017, when I think most of us took the time to go back and even listen to those arguments, and that's where we are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no further questions.
All right. Ms. Jeffrey.
Thank you. I can't breathe in this thing. I apologize. And I've been vaccinated, so I just, but I do need to make sure you guys can hear me clearly. I do appreciate Mr. Frayland and his organization for the presentation, and also I appreciate the citizens who are in opposition to this. I'm in favor of affordable housing. I think it's key to maintaining a vibrant city, especially in a community. And I looked at the drawings, and I liked the concept of what you're doing. I do have some serious concerns about the right turn only and the safety part. I really do have a major concern. And I recently just moved into the Raleigh Court area. And to be honest, before I moved, I wasn't, I was, I'm definitely concerned about the issues that was going on in Raleigh Court. But when I moved in that area, I started, I do travel Brandon Avenue every day now. Every day I travel Brandon. I've seen traffic, and since I've moved in that area, I've witnessed at least three traffic accidents in that area already. So, and actually, it was an accident actually today on my way to, I usually get my smoothie over in Choppa Coffee. You don't want to hear that part. But I did witness an accident just there. And also, I've listened to my new neighbors and their concern in that area as well. And I do have one question because Mr. Cobb has eloquently, has asked the significant amount of questions that I think we can have, we have answers to. But I do wonder why this has been going on for the past couple of years, why there hasn't been any major discussions between the opposition and the developers. And I want to know why, because my understanding, there hasn't been any presence at any of the neighborhood meetings. And if I'm wrong, please, please tell me I'm not. But my understanding that there has been neighborhood meetings regarding this issue, and there's been invitation from the development to attend. And my understanding that hasn't, that didn't occur. If I'm wrong, please tell me right now to address that. But I'm just curious why such importance in this, that we haven't had the time to sit down and try to discuss what these issues are and see if we can have a compromise here. I believe this, and I believe that we should have affordable housing. It's important to us. But I need to understand why we couldn't communicate, these two polarized positions have not communicated to each other. Go ahead, please. Please.
Thank you. I obviously wasn't present with the company at the last hearing in 2017. I will say that we did reach out to several of the neighborhood organizations. We contacted the Wasina as well as Raleigh Court. We did invite them to attend our Zoom. I hope some of those citizens were present. And did provide an email address that they could pose any questions. Unfortunately, we did not receive too many questions directly from the neighborhood. Certainly tried to open those doors and happy to have open debate or discussion to answer questions to the best of our ability. So, we certainly did try to connect with the citizens. We did not host a dedicated meeting for them directly, but we did invite them to the Zoom. And I know a couple posted on their Facebook page as well as their website that those citizens could reach out and ask questions. So, we tried to be very open with giving them a forum to communicate directly with us this time around.
Okay. One, go ahead, Mr. Ray.
Obviously, COVID had some restrictions, but we advertised a bunch and reached out a lot to these community organizations and did have a Zoom. It was tough for them, tough for us, but we did not find it safe to meet in person. And we invited to a Zoom call, and we had some folks that are here on it, and they were happy to tell you. So, we did do that, and we obviously met in person last time. But all these types of situations, the developer reaches out to the community, and sometimes we never come to something that's perfect for everybody. But we did do it last time, and we did do it this time.
Okay. One last question, Mr. Frayland, while you're here. In this project, you, of course, talking about creation of new jobs. What is the estimate of new jobs based on this project that you'll be creating?
Everybody's tired, and I don't want to belabor that, but I can talk about that in all due. When you inject $10 million into the economy, it creates construction jobs, it creates supply jobs, vendors. And also, when you have a housing project like this, it creates jobs for local business. See, our local businesses survive on people petitioning their business. And this helps Towers Mall, it helps the Village Center, it helps the convenience store on Colonial Avenue, it helps the Brandon area. So, jobs, jobs, jobs. And so, you know, what this is boiling down to is traffic. And again, I highly encourage you to ask our traffic engineers, Mr. Jeffrey, because you obviously aren't sold on traffic, about traffic. Because you haven't done that yet, sir, respectfully. I don't think you've asked them yet about the difference.
Well, no, that's my next question.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
Anything else?
No, no.
No, that's the job, but that's the job answer that I have. As to the exact number of jobs, yeah, respectfully, I can't give you that number. But I know it's a lot, and I know the local businesses enjoy the benefits and hire people.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you.
One last question, and I'm going to move this along. Regarding the traffic, I just want to make sure, what Mr. Frayland is saying, do you agree the safetiness of this with the round, with the right turn? How safe is this? Because I'm hearing that it's not safe, well, we can make it, I mean, it can possibly be safe if we do something. How safety, how safe is this?
Well, I would say that taking it from the perspective of comparing two stop-controlled driveways versus 12 typical single-home driveways, you could make that comparison that two stop-controlled driveways are safer. From the standpoint of a right turnout, it really only provides, in this particular case, you really only can go east. And so, we do have that question as to whether, where and how those folks that want to go west will make that happen. So, that points to the east, and they have a variety of options that they can do. Hopefully, they do it lawfully.
Let me add to, let me add it to that. And also, we're talking about the right turn only, and that will reduce number of point, conflict points, okay? Versus a left turn for access, you got about 32 some points, conflict, potential conflict points. But the right in, right out reduce tremendously for that as far as right in, right out, that will improve the safety.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I defer to Ms. Moon.
Just like all of us, I must say I'm tired, I'm fading, so I'm not going to ask a lot of questions. I must say, given this project a lot of thought, since Mr. Frayland filed the amended application in June. And I, too, have read so much. In fact, I was the clerk at the time in 2017, so I didn't want to relive it, just like it's like deja vu almost. And I did read over the minutes from the Planning Commission. I look back at the application. I've got so much paper up here that I'm just almost confused and inundated. And I did meet with Mr. Frayland and his staff to discuss his project, and I did ask him questions at that time. And one of the main things I was concerned about then was, we are calling this a village center or a neighborhood center. And when I read the documents through them, I noticed where this was considered to be part of Franklin Road and Colonial, which is not close to Franklin Road or Colonial, but yet it's a, not even really what I call adjacent to when I think of adjacent, Wasina and Raleigh Court. So, it really doesn't fit in any neighborhood. So, that to me was, I couldn't go by that. But my concern was with the pedestrians. If one tries to cross over, to go to a village center, let's say if you wanted to go to Wasina, trying to cross over with all the different traffic patterns going, you're taking your life into your own hands. So, that to me was definitely a concern. I did hear from some property owners, not a lot. And so, unlike my colleagues, I'm thankful I wasn't inundated. I just heard from the majority that sent them out to counsel. No one personally reached out to me. So, that in itself saved grace for me was a good thing. The other thing was, I did meet and talk with the planning staff to get some more understanding, although some of the answers I got, I still wasn't comfortable with, even though they tried to put my concerns at ease, I was still no. That just didn't sit well. So, I did talk with a couple of planning consultants who are very familiar with that area, to ask them about the property and the appropriate use and the traffic. And three times, they said to me that it was not a good use of the property. It was more or less, if he went with the A, it was trying to make it fit, and the city was going along with that because of what the plan called for. The other part of it was the traffic. I looked at, and I talked with the planning staff, trying to look at where that left turn was going to be. I was still concerned because it was just a few feet down from where you would turn left onto Brambleton. And you would try to stack two or three cars, or three to four cars there, to go over to the other side, to go into the property. So, I was still, again, concerned. So, I, on yesterday evening around 4:00, I visited that area, and it was doing a low volume, traffic volume, and I did witness some serious conflicts in both directions. And I was over there for almost two hours. I even went around to Brandon Lane. I looked around in that area, trying to get an idea, coming back and forth. I used to drive through there for several years with my, taking my son to school over there. And now, my granddaughter, when she was going to Freshburn, right before COVID, so I'm very familiar, and just like Robert, I would go over and get a smoothie. So, with the new traffic pattern, I did get confused at first. I was used to the two lanes, and then it dawned on me that this is a turning lane now in the center lane. So, that in itself gave me pause. But I did witness three little infractions. One where a gentleman was trying to come out of his driveway and turn on going west, and he had to wait even in low volume to get there. I even saw one come out of his driveway and turn onto Brandon and make a U-turn where Mr. Frayland wants to make the left turn to go down east. So, I was a little concerned with that. And doing all of this, if they're not careful, if someone's trying to cross over, if someone is trying to turn, you have an accident waiting to happen. So, with that said, I am still concerned about all of that with the traffic and believe, as well as for the property, if he goes with A, that it is too much density for the area and along with the proposed dedicated left-turn lane that he's planning to construct to separate the vehicular traffic, assessing the development, from Brambleton Avenue. Further to the west, traffic will only exacerbate the traffic problem that currently exists. So, with that said, I am still mainly concerned with the traffic flow than anything else. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ms. Sanchez, on.
One of my concerns is still the parking lot because of stormwater management. And whatever we decide to do tonight, if we decide to go with this plan, I really would like to hear the solution of a permeable parking lot, that's if it goes through. And is that something that will be possible?
Hello.
Hi.
It's me. Yes, so, we were using asphalt with the trench to clean the stormwater, and then we've offered concrete, which lowers the heat index. And then, you're offering, suggesting that we use permeable pavers. Is that right?
Yes.
And so, Ben, you're probably more familiar with that. So, I think it'd be helpful for all of us, for you to sort of explain what that is and the benefits and whatnot, because I've not used them in any of my developments before, to be quite honest with you.
So, not to rehash or go back through this, but permeable pavement systems provide the same processes as the infiltration trench is providing. So, they work in, they can work in parallel with each other, but if you provide permeable pavement that's upstream of the trench, the water's never going to get to the trench. So, it's either kind of permeable pavement or an infiltration trench, because if the water's already going in up here, it's never going to get down to this lower area. So, I can see the, I can see the request and understand, you know, understand that part of it, but they would not work in conjunction with each other to make it stronger, if that makes sense. It would kind of be, all right, pervious pavement is a great option, or the infiltration trench is a good option. And I would submit to you that an infiltration trench with plantings and different soil media is much more effective than just a pervious asphalt or a pervious concrete setup. So, does that help?
Yes, it does.
Explain it.
On top of that, we are more than happy to meet with staff, and they can get to you the results of A versus B later on, and we can work conjunctively, which is what we all want, is to work collaboratively together, whether this goes through or not, in any development.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I just want to say something else regarding the traffic. I work for the school system, and I drive to Patrick Henry every morning. And since they made the lane changes, I haven't noticed any issues at Brambleton and Brandon. I haven't. So, the traffic is running smoother now after they made the lane changes.
Thank you. Well, let me just say that, thank all of you all for coming down here tonight. I am one of two members on this council that voted no in 2017 because of a number of reasons that we've alluded to tonight. However, I've seen some progress and some changes. I think it's different, I mean, and we've talked about that. I don't want to be too redundant, but I think we have a need now in our city for affordable housing. now in our city for affordable housing, quality housing, and I think our situation is such now that if, that we need to do what we can to work through this, I know, I've had some inquiries with our planning department, and I've talked with Mr. Fraylon about the improvement, and one thing that I, I appreciate that he has promised, and we'll hold him to that, is he's going to continue to work with the city on certain things that we have, that, that we need, and I know, as we talk about greenways and what we can do there, I think that's important, but rain mitigation is something that we need to be concerned about. I didn't hear a real clear answer on that, and how this, what the plan is for that, if it's planned out there, I may have missed that aspect of it, and how that's going to be handled. Can you all just briefly come back and share with us, share with me again, your thoughts on, on water, rain mitigation, and how that's going to be handled?
Good evening, members of council. From the Stormwater Division of Public Works, we have looked at the plan, and I guess from a stormwater management perspective, that's something we kind of tag teams the planning department on, different regulatory aspects. One of the big concerns we had in stormwater was the private drive that was backing into the riparian buffer on the north side of Murray Run, and that was one of the questions of, could we look at permeable pavers or an infiltration trench, and the, sorry, hard to breathe, but one of the questions that we had, though, would be, is it possible to look at some kind of a BMP to mitigate some of the loss of riparian buffer on that north side of Murray Run, and the condition has been added to the development plan that would require a BMP to create some infiltration to offset that riparian buffer loss. So that was a big concern of ours that has been addressed, and I think the other concern that we had was then filling in the floodway as it comes through the property, particularly with the bridge that would cross to the future townhomes, and from discussion with Ballzer, they're going to do a clear span bridge rather than putting in a culver or something like that that would restrict flow, so from a stormwater utility, those were our two biggest concerns, and those would have been addressed by the developer.
Okay. All right, I think I've further enough to ready to, to make a decision, and we are done here. All right, anybody else have any follow-up questions that they want to ask? Because now I'm ready to call for the vote. All right, Madam, please call for the vote here.
Mr. Jeffrey.
I believe in, I'm just going to say this real quick, because I don't want to waste too many people's time. I do believe in the importance of affordable housing, and I do understand the importance of the planning commission, and I understand that we appointed the planning commission, but also our job on council is to listen to the will of the people, and I am, at this time, have some, some reservations. I appreciate Mr. Fraylon's work on this, and I know he's been working hard on this, and I understand his intent of this, but at this time, I'm going to have to vote no.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
No.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
I have a statement, that's okay, would be too lengthy? Would it be okay? I want you to know that I have read and heard all your concerns regarding the rezoning, the reasons why we should not approve the rezoning of Zero Brandon Avenue. With that being said, for over fifteen years, I have been the voice of hundreds of people in our community. Tonight, I would like to be the voice of those, of those not represented here tonight. The people that I have to, the people are, those that have to commute hours to come and work here, the young professionals, with that in mind, I vote in favor of rezoning Zero Brandon Avenue.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
No.
Mr. Cobb?
No.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
And the application fails for lack of a majority vote.
All right, thank you. Wait, is that the? Okay, well, I thought we were going to go to hearing of citizens. Madam Clerk, are we down to the hearing of citizens? Are we down to the hearing of citizens?
Are we going to go recess?
Yes, I want to, we can do that, let's go to the two people. No, they've all been spoken.
Okay.
So we're doing the hearing of citizens, that's what this is. All right, we're now down to the hearing of citizens upon public matters. This city council sets this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. If deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation or report to the council, and the speakers have our hearing person and assigned slips to be given, fine slips to state their issue. And the first speaker we have, and that wants to talk about homeless encampment, is Michael T. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members. I'm ready to go home and go to bed, so I will make this quick. I represent eight homeowners who reside on Norfolk Avenue in the multicolored residences known as Row by the Rail on Warehouse Row. The area outside our homes is often used for prom and graduation pictures and family portraits. Photos of the row are sold down on the market by local photographers. This spring, a problem began and it steadily grown, an encampment appeared under the southern end of the Gainesboro Bridge. People in tents took up residence less than fifty feet from our homes. Initially, it was one person in a single tent who we thought was temporarily staying there. Unfortunately, he began collecting items and storing them on the sidewalk, such as dining room chairs and other furniture. Later, he began to exhibit erratic behavior, having loud altercations with others, throwing a sort of trash on the sidewalk and into the parking lot, and tossing pet food into the street, attracting rodents. Then more tents and people appeared with more noise at night, yelling and sometimes partying and altercations. There was an increase in garbage, growing police involvement, public urination, and human excrement, sometimes in buckets and sometimes in the street by the sidewalk. We witnessed and have photos of these people using the bathroom in public, outside our houses. We discovered that tents were being provided by Roanoke's homeless assistance team. We understand the desire to provide shelter, and we agree the city should aid those in need. Initially, we thought perhaps the plan was for the tents to be used as a temporary shelter, which individuals could relocate from time to time, but instead, we have a growing encampment with no access by the inhabitants to water or sewage facilities. Although we reside downtown, we did not purchase our properties to be in the middle of a raucous environment. Now, however, we find ourselves in an ongoing battle with people who loudly shout and argue under an echoing bridge at night. Add to that the collections of human waste and trash, and we are now rethinking our decisions to live downtown. Over the past months, we've collected pictures and videos to document, document our escalating concerns. We are concerned that HAT provided these tent shelters to those in need, but did not consider the need for public facilities such as water or toilets. It seems they did not contemplate where people would relieve themselves if not near the tents they provided. Row by the rail residents pay property taxes of over thirty thousand dollars annually. As taxpaying residents, we expect to live without having to walk out our front door or having our children walk out and seeing a person living in a tent fifty feet away urinating or defecating on a wall. We understand that unsheltered citizens have rights, but we need to emphatically emphasize that their rights should not supersede those of us who are permanent residents and who pay city taxes and whose daily life, as well as property values, are being adversely affected. We are concerned that it will be difficult to sell or rent our homes when a tent city is set up outside our front door. Perhaps some of the city's funds should be utilized for a true shelter. The homeless population should not have to rely solely on private agencies like the Rescue Mission or Trust House. In our opinion, the answer is not tents with inadequate facilities, but a substantial and permanent city-run structure. In the interim, the city should consider implementing a ban on public camping, which I understand may be under consideration. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If he has pictures, if he could get them to our clerk, that would be very helpful.
Yes, sir, do you have any pictures that you can share?
We can't, we don't have them obviously right here, but we'll certainly get them to you.
You can get those to the clerk, that'd be wonderful. Thanks for giving them.
We'll get it to the clerk, and then for any further follow-up on that, we'll refer to the city manager.
Okay, thank you.
He'll get in touch. All right. Does that conclude another?
Is one more, do you have another?
You have it, call the name out of the person, I'll swear.
Douglas Pitzer?
Douglas Pitzer.
Thank you. She's going to pull up the papers as well on the PowerPoint, so we can see it as well on the screen. Just give us one second, please. How's it going today, sir? Okay, so everyone should have two pages, soon as this pops up, we'll get it going. It's kind of, can you fit it to the screen? Minimize the size of the screen, so maybe they can see everything, just make it a little smaller. Like the three dots. Yep, yep, and then go to maybe forty-five percent. There we go, that works, okay. Sorry about that, so we are now prepared to get started, okay, go ahead.
So hi, everybody, my name is Ashley Pennell, it's been a pleasure to speak in front of you again, and I want to thank you all for everything you do, it's been a long day, so thank you for your position here in the city. Again, I'm Ashley, I'm the Director of Operations for Strokes of Genius, and I'd like to introduce our founder, Douglas Pitzer.
Okay, how's it going, everybody? My name is Douglas Pitzer, one more time, also Comethousted. We will, today we're going to talk about Strokes of Genius, how we've been enriching the community, and how we would like to continue enriching the community, now with the support of Roanoke City. So first to jump into it, I just would like to tell, who is Strokes of Genius? Strokes of Genius is an educational service provider, we've been working within the community since 2019. Specifically, we've been working with kids in the ages of, well, in the areas of elementary, middle school, and high school, as well as we do computer basics for senior citizens during those current times. But what exactly have we been doing? The area that I'm going to focus on tonight is the virtual schooling, as well as what we've been doing with kids within the community. Now, we have been providing socialization to senior citizens through computer basics, but the main thing that we've been emphasizing is at the Roanoke Higher Education Center, through a partnership with the organization out of Washington DC, we provided the instruction as well as the curriculum, and they simply provided the space. The benefit of this is students now have access, and it's very convenient for them to be able to get to the Roanoke Higher Education Center after school. We've had kids from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, they get off the bus, and they come straight to the Roanoke Higher Education Center, so they can provide tutoring as well as other educational assistance. One of the benefits from that is, as you know, what's taking place in the Gainesboro community at the moment, we're providing them a safe space where they're actually learning at the moment. Keeping it going, the benefit of this, as we've said, is that safe space where kids can learn after school. The downfall is because we are working with the organization out of Washington DC, forty percent of the profit that we make goes to Washington DC, it leaves Roanoke City. That money could be benefiting the kids in the community so much more. We are simply giving them that money because they are providing the space. So that takes us to what we're here for today. We are finally asking for support from the city, and I'll let you keep it going.
Correct, so as you can hear, we're here for the community, our passion's here, we love being here, we hate that we have to send money away from our city, so we need help with providing our kids and senior citizens a space.
Correct.
And we simply just need support from our city, so we can continue to support our city. We want to enrich our community, but we can't, because we don't have this space anymore due to this partnership being out at another location.
Correct.
So how can the city help? We just want support.
Correct.
For the next three months, we're asking the city to provide us with a space, preferably a computer lab, so we can continue to offer after-school career building for our kids, we want to continue to offer computer basics and cybersecurity, and knowledge of how to protect your information for senior citizens.
Correct.
We also offer vocational training for adults. So we also want to explain why this is important, because community members of all ages are getting that education, so we can further enrich our community. We want to prepare our students for jobs that are created here locally, and we want to continue to protect our senior citizens. Every day I have a senior calling me happy because they found a new scam that they protect themselves from.
Correct.
So we simply just ask for support for the next three months, this program has been working, it does work, and we just need a space.
Correct.
So we ask that you consider helping Strokes of Genius continue to enrich our education to all members and all ages of the community.
Correct, and we still want to emphasize one more time, it's not two separate programs, we work with kids and we work with senior citizens within that space. Recently, about a month ago, Senator, Republic, Senator, Governor Canet, Hala, Hila Alaya, I'm sorry, and Senator John Edwards, they actually stopped by our location, and they were blown away, and they talked about how this should be used throughout the community more, and so that's why we're coming to the city, rather than reaching out to the various organizations we've been working with over the past two years.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for us?
No, what?
So one question, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, how much square footage would you need in terms of a space? Are you looking for one room or multiple?
So, we're, we're actually not picky, I'll be honest, there's, yeah, there is a major benefit with the Roanoke Higher Education Center, the last
The last job fair that they had, the only kids that attended that job fair were our kids that we've been bringing to the building. Through that connection, they got networking with Radford, Virginia Tech, Code for America. The space size isn't really of importance. If you give us a space where we can educationally work with our kids, we will make it work. But I would like to emphasize, the Higher Education Center has been benefiting us, as well as we've been benefiting them as well.
Is that where you are now?
Correct. We're on the eighth floor of the Higher Education Center.
Well.
Sure. You're no longer, you're no longer able to stay in this space?
So.
Did I miss something?
No, ma'am, the situation, honestly, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you go ahead.
So I guess, just a brief background. The way that the collaboration came together, I'm in my master's program at Virginia Tech in Curriculum and Instruction. I met an individual from Washington, D.C., and he was talking about a program that he has that he wanted to bring to Roanoke. He did not have instructors, he didn't have a curriculum, but I had that because of school, so we came together as a collaborative partnership. There hasn't been major issues, but I just personally don't feel comfortable charging my kids the price that we have to charge, just so he can get his percentage. He is not physically here, and we've realized that everything the program has turned into has been because of us two. So we would like to continue actually benefiting the community without, I feel like, taking away so much money from them, because I personally, because we have 15 years together in the nonprofit and volunteering area, it just doesn't feel right charging them that high amount, that we necessarily don't have to, but we do because of the percentage that has to go back to D.C.
Forty percent has to go back to D.C.
Correct, forty percent, yeah.
And which means we have to increase our programming.
Correct.
Which is not affordable anymore.
Correct. But as it's expanding, I just don't feel comfortable continuously charging people more because our bosses see the, they have dollar signs in their eyes right now.
So in this space you're looking for, is it just brick and mortar, chairs?
So preferably for me, that's in the full world.
I'm just trying to make sure.
I got you.
Yes, ma'am. So preferably for the vision that I see for our program, it would be a computer lab.
Okay.
And so in the computer lab, we've been only working with five computers, and we've been making that work. So imagine if we had 10 to 15. And so in my mind, we could do cohort style of instruction. And so that'll offer more people getting into the program, that'll offer camaraderie between our students of all ages, because they're moving through this together. And so I know for me, and I know for Doug, probably, a computer-style computer lab, simply because that's where technology and jobs are going, is to technology. And that's what we focus on, is technology.
And another benefit of the higher, Roanoke Higher Education Center, is the resources that they have provided already inside for the people that are there. So if we had a space there, just a simple classroom, we would also have the computer lab in the other areas available to the students there. So it's kind of all encompassing. And specifically for some of our kids in the Gainesboro area, they said they feel like college students when they're walking through the Roanoke Higher Education Center. So that experience is already building up that, you know, preparation. Correct.
Thank you.
Well, let me say, it's been our practice to refer these to the city manager to follow up, before we make any decision on this, and he'll get back with us once they follow up with you all in terms of the program and what they're doing, and all those financial kinds of issues.
Got you, got you. Okay.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you, city council.
Thank you, thank you.
It's good seeing you, Ashley.
Good to see you all again.
Yes. You do say, thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, Tim told me he spoke with your attorney on this, and so it's consensual everybody, we go ahead and finish this out tonight. All right, we ready? We got a resolution. Have you all come out? I went here, you came out of the closed session.
We came out of closed session.
Well, we have a resolution.
Is this a motion to add it to the agenda, Mayor?
Has it been, it's been added.
It has not been added as of yet. So this, we would first need a motion to add it to the agenda, and then to consider the resolution.
All right, so we have a resolution that we're going to add to the agenda. And I need a motion for that.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I move that we add the resolution to the agenda.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the first paragraph of this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, since this resolution is being added and would be entered into the racket, is it appropriate for her to read it in its entirety as to what it states? Then it just apparent, then just the title paragraph?
All right, you may read it, thank you. You may read it in entirety, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
A resolution requesting that Councilmember Robert Jeffrey consider taking a leave of absence from the city council until final disposition of the criminal charges pending against him are disposed of by the court. Whereas Councilmember Jeffrey has been indicted for two felony charges of embezzlement and two felony charges of obtaining money from the city's Economic Development Authority under false pretenses. Whereas the criminal trial of Councilmember Robert Jeffrey for these felony charges has been continued until March 14, 2022. Whereas Councilmember Robert Jeffrey has asserted his innocence regarding these charges, and council recognizes and supports the fact that an individual facing criminal charges is presumed innocent until proven guilty. Whereas council does not have the authority to mandate that a council member take a leave of absence while such criminal charges are pending. Whereas the continued presence of Councilmember Robert Jeffrey at council meetings inhibits the effectiveness of council by distracting the public from the business of the city. Whereas if Councilmember Jeffrey is convicted of the felony charges pending against him, and he has exhausted all rights of appeal, then he would not be suitable to serve on council, and shall, by such final conviction, forfeit his office. Whereas should Councilmember Robert Jeffrey be acquitted of pending charges, he should return to his duties as a council member. Therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Roanoke, that council hereby request that Councilmember Robert Jeffrey consider taking a leave of absence from his council until final disposition of the criminal charges pending against him are disposed of by the court trying the case.
All right. Is there any discussion or comments on that? Mr. Jeffrey? I understand the reason why my colleagues would have to do this and get to this measure. But I also understand some of these, some of these reasonings are political in nature, and I understand, being an elected officer, that we have to sometimes do things political to show face in expressing their issues or concerns with the public. But I do want to reiterate that, against these charges, that I am innocent of these charges, and I strongly stating the fact of my innocence. I appreciate the fact that this resolution is being adopted. However, I'm going to make it very clear, and I want to make sure that everyone know and understand, that my intent is to stay in office. My intent is to do what I was elected to do by the city, and I will do that until my court date, to where I will be vindicated from these charges. So I understand that we do, we have to do things, in essence, to show face in our community. However, I am telling you to the public that I am innocent of these charges. And again, I am willing to go have due process, which I think I have the right, with any individual in the city, has, is the right for due process, and I will do this before any other judgment after that. So again, I want to reiterate that I am not leaving office, period. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Ready to call the roll?
Yeah, on this resolution.
Mr. Jeffrey?
I'll accuse myself of this.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
And so.
And that places it on the agenda, if we could have a motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, did you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Jeffrey?
I recuse myself.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. All right, there being no further business to come before the council, the council meeting is hereby adjourned.